If he doesn't provide us with scotch. He's got coffee.
Hello, Henry.
Good, how are you? Thank you.
Okay. Our second to last city council meeting for 2019.
We were never allowed to go that far. There was some seedy people. You've got 20 seconds. My Mr. Rogers imitation. All right, we ready to go? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The hour is seven o'clock, and as mayor, I hereby call to order this meeting of the Laconia City Council scheduled for December 9, 2019 at this time. Begin our meeting tonight with a salute to our American flag. I would ask that you please rise and join Counselor Henry Lippman in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll note for the record that the minutes of tonight's meeting are being kept by City Clerk Cheryl Hebert, and I would ask that she please call the roll.
Counselor Cheney.
Here.
Counselor Bowns.
Here.
Counselor Lippman.
Present.
Counselor Haynes.
Here.
Counselor Hamel.
Present.
Counselor Hosmer.
Here.
Mayor Engler.
Here.
Here when tonight?
We've been unanimous on one occasion in the last three years.
We can't agree on anything, can we? All right, let the record show that all six counselors are present tonight, and a quorum has been established for this meeting. And while I'm on the subject of a quorum, I would, with the unanimous consent of the council, I would like to break with the agenda and look ahead two weeks. Our next meeting is scheduled for December 23rd. And two members of council have already noted to me that they will not be present that night. All goes according to plan. So, at this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone else. I don't know what happened to the symbol on this calendar. If there's anyone else on the council who does not expect to be here on the 23rd.
I don't know.
I'm not here. Don't know.
I don't know. We can get a lot done.
All right, so let's keep that in mind then as we go through the agenda tonight, and we look forward or not forward to our next meeting because there's a possibility that we will not have a quorum present on the 23rd to transact the old business. So I would appreciate being kept in the loop by any of you who have plans or will be making plans that could alter that status.
Mr. Mayor, who are the two that said they will not be here?
Oh, okay, the five and six. Okay, I want to note for the record as well, Madam Clerk, that at the head table tonight, the members of council are joined by City Manager Scott Myers and by the City Finance Director Glenn Smith. At this point in time, I would also like to request unanimous consent from the council to deviate slightly from the agenda in order to make a very important, and I think timely, announcement that our entire community will be interested in. And that is that, as of today, the City of Laconia and the Bellknap Economic Development Council have announced that the financial financing closing for the Colonial Theater project. The financing for the Colonial project has closed. All the lawyers have signed in the appropriate places, and all the Ts have been crossed, and all the Is have been dotted, and all the thousands of words have been written that were necessary to complete this deal. The entire financing package is assured and is in order. And so this is a monumental day for those of us who have been, for all of us, but certainly for those of us who have been involved in this project almost literally on a day-to-day basis for just short of five years. That it took us far longer than we ever anticipated that it was going to take to get to this point, but nonetheless, we got here. And so, construction on the Colonial project, which is anticipated to take approximately one year, will begin immediately. It already has begun to some extent, but now will go full steam immediately. I have Bonnet Page and Stone as the contractor. The theater, as you know, is being built to accommodate approximately 750 patrons. It will be able to host various types of civic and cultural activities, including live stage performances and musical acts. The City of Laconia will be the master tenant of the theater and manage its operations. And toward that end, I would also like to announce tonight jointly with Mayor-elect Hosmer that the two of us are going to jointly, in the next week or so, appoint a committee of members of our community with the blessing of the city council when those names are announced, to steer us through the next phase on the management of the theater. Now that we have the go-ahead for construction and we have all the money lined up, one of our chief tasks now is to determine just exactly what kind of management structure we're going to have for the theater, and then to get that structure in place. And because we would be looking at starting to book acts very early in 2020 to appear at the theater, it behooves us to get started as soon as possible on that. But first, we have to agree on what sort of management structure we want, how we want the theater to be managed. For example, is the city going to do it itself? Is it going to contract out with a third party to manage the theater, and so on and so on? And if so, what kind of arrangement would we like to have with the management company or person or persons that would manage the theater, and what would their responsibilities be, and what would the city's responsibilities be? So we'll be looking for this committee by the end of January to be able to come back to this council with a recommendation on how they believe that should be structured. And then the next step would be to get out as soon as possible requests for proposal for potential agents, if there calls for that, to manage the theater on behalf of the city when it opens in early 2020. One thing I'd like to call attention to tonight in terms of not just the volunteer effort, but more than, one of the things I'm proudest about, about putting the funding stack together that ended up finding millions and millions of dollars to make this happen is that more than 350 businesses and individuals have donated voluntarily to the project to date. And that's a really stunning number, and the total amount of money that has been committed in cash and pledges from 350 parties is almost $1.6 million that was raised of that total privately here in the community. And that's quite a monumental feat, and I'm very proud of everyone who participated. Now, having said that, we're probably not through. While I want to stress that the entire cost of refurbishing the theater, renovating the theater back to its original 1914 state is covered by the money we already have in hand at this point in time, we're still going to do some fundraising. And the reason for private fundraising, and the reason for that is simple, that we anticipate, as always with projects of this size and scope, there are going to be little things that come up either now or down the road somewhere. They're going to cost $10,000 that we don't have in the budget or whatever, and we're going to have to make decisions on whether to include those smaller items and whatnot in the project or not. And it would be nice to have a little extra money on hand to be able to deal with those items when they come up. So I'm hoping that those of you who have not yet had a chance to donate to the project, now that we're sure that this is going to happen, sure, 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 that you will consider writing a check regardless of how large or how small to the project to become part of it. And if you already have given money to the project, I would hope that this reinforces your belief in that project and possibly might lead you to make another contribution of sort. The last thing I'd like to do before we move on is I would be really negligent if I didn't mention, I did allude to the fact that we've had many, many twists and turns to this story over the past five years, many of which were not positive twists and turns. And we have been confronted with any number of obstacles, and any number of times I have been required to come before you, members of council, and say, "Well, you know, that plan we had, it didn't work. And now we're on to Plan B, or C, or D, or whatever it is." And to its credit, the council has, from the very beginning, unanimously believed in this project and has, after asking all the requisite questions in terms of due diligence, the council has remained steadfastly unanimously in back of this project, and that has been a great deal. Perhaps the ugliest moment was when I had to come to you in June of 2017, two and a half years ago, and tell you that the New Market Tax Credit allotment that we thought we were going to get turned out to be a mirage, and we were months late in even figuring that out. And that everything was back at ground zero, literally, at that point in time. And the council stepped forward at that time, if you will recall, and asked the Bellknap Economic Development Council, our partners in this project, to join us in forming a joint steering committee that would look into the dilemma we faced and come up with solutions on a timely basis. And that committee, steering committee, under the leadership of Gary Grolo, started meeting in June of 2017 and has met, I don't know how many times since, hundreds of hours. Many, almost every week since that point in time, trying to steer this project clear to where we are today. So I wanted, one more time, to reach out and recognize the people who have served on that committee and thank them individually. Some of them may be with us tonight. I see Justin back there. Is anybody else from BEDC here tonight? Justin?
Chris Kelly was trying to get here.
Chris, is Chris here?
Chris Kelly's down here, yeah.
Okay. Ask him to step in the room if you could, or somebody, just so we can say thank you. So the people on that steering committee included, as I said, Gary Grolo, who many of you know, who served as more than ably as chairman of that committee. Also serving on that committee was Justin Slattery, the executive director of the BEDC, who's with us here tonight. Old friend Gracie Silley. I think a lot of people know Gracie and Chet Silley and all. They have contributed to our community over the years. Andrew Pike, served more than ably, has served more than ably on that committee, as has Randy Eifert and Jennifer Anderson, and Chris Kelly. There's Chris. Thank you, Chris. Chris is the chairman of the Bellknap Economic Development Council. I know some of you, many of you probably know him, but he has been a rock in all of this. And when I've had wavering moments, he has always been there, either over the phone or in person, to assure me that we were going to get this done. And so, we have, and that's good. I mentioned Randy Eifert's name. I'd like to, Randy's not here tonight, but I'd like to accentuate Randy Eifert's name because Randy and I, of all the people involved in this project, Randy and I, of all the volunteers, have been with this project the longest and from the very, very beginning. Randy was chairman of the Bellknap Economic Development Council when this project was first proposed. And he and I have worked together, meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting over the years, to see this coming. And even though he's not even on the Bellknap Economic Development Council Board anymore, his devotion to seeing this project through to the end has never wavered. And I'm extremely grateful for that. And lastly, I wasn't the only person at this front table who served on that committee as well over the past two and a half years. I was joined more than ably at each and every meeting, and several of those that I was not able to attend, or he did. And that is my dear friend Bob. Counselor Bob Hamel. Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion with hopefully unanimous vote, I'd like to have the council vote on having the mayor continue on the committee, the Colonial Committee, to its completion within a year or so. I'd like to have that vote, and I'll make that as a motion.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Hamel, seconded by Counselor Hosmer, to have the city council appoint soon outgoing Mayor Engler to represent, continue to represent the city on the steering committee managing the Colonial Theater project. Any discussion?
Yes. I want to take a moment, I suppose this is not a discussion, but I want to take a moment as this will be potentially your last meeting and maybe your second to last meeting, sitting in that chair, to congratulate you, to praise you for the work that you've done. And it is a special delight for me that you can make this announcement, sitting in that chair tonight.
I barely made it, though.
I could see that.
I was beginning to question whether...
I could see that.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes affirm that that motion carries. I would also note for the new mayor that you're, there are two members of the council on that committee, and you're more than welcome to either appoint yourself or another member of council to join that committee as well. Thank you. We get too many, we get too many, but certainly one more would not be an issue. All right, council proclamations. We have a proclamation tonight to get to. I'm going to come around front for this. You know, I've been mayor for five years now, and there's any number of official duties that the mayor gets to preside over over the course of a year. Some are frankly more enduring than others, enduring, or maybe enduring than others, although all are appreciated and done with as much enthusiasm and gratefulness as possible. But I personally always look forward to this night in December, perhaps more than any other on that agenda, because it is at that meeting in December when I get to have the privilege as representing all the people of Laconia to award that year's recipient of the Deborah B. Nars Memorial Award. Twenty-three years ago, the Laconia City Council established the Deborah B. Nars Memorial Award for Outstanding Service to Children and Youth in the Lakes Region in memory of Police Officer Deborah B. Nars. The late Officer B. Nars served the city and its youth with uncommon devotion, dedication, and distinction during her nine years with the police department before her untimely death in 1987. Each year, a committee comprised of one city counselor, one member of the police department, and one member of the school board selects an individual to be recognized for this award based on nominations from members of the community. The award honors a member of the community who has enlivened and enriched the lives of our young people. And this is why I like to add a little aside, because typically, the person who's getting the award every year does not realize that they are the recipient. And so I would warn all of you that are in the room tonight that you are potential candidates. And as I start going down the list of qualifications and achievements, you will quickly start eliminating yourselves. Not the first clue will be the word he or she, so that's going to eliminate half of you right there on the first reference of gender to the award recipient this year. But this is an exciting part of it because the one question I would have you ask yourself is, "Are you here tonight for a really good reason?" Or "Are you here tonight only for a so-so reason?" Because if you're here for not a really good reason tonight, or one that sounded a little fishy to you, you might be the recipient. Okay. There is no greater champion of children and youth in our community than the unsung hero who is this year's honoree. She spreads love wherever she goes and makes all those in her life inspired to be involved. Adding softness with a warm smile or a word of encouragement, she is truly a light that shines on everyone around her. Acting as co-chair and longtime board member of the Santa Fund, she works tirelessly all year long to ensure that the children of the Lakes Region are kept warm with a quiet humility that treats everyone she helps with dignity. As co-founder of the local service group Cereal Heroes, she has helped to lead the boys in this group in dozens of projects to raise money for kids in need. Oh. I think the cat must be out of the bag by now. She is helping to shape the future of the Lakes Region by guiding those young leaders of our community with her knowledge and her altruism. This year's winner gives her time freely and enthusiastically to improve our community in countless ways. She leads by example with kindness and generosity in everything she does, and the community is indeed fortunate to have someone like her in it. She deserves to be thanked and recognized for her many years of helping others while expecting nothing in return. She is held in the highest regards by her peers, family, friends, and community members. She is a true hero and champion of children and others less fortunate. In recognition of this year's honoree's outstanding commitment to the youth of Laconia, I, as mayor, am proud to please to present the 2019 Deborah B. Nars Award to Elizabeth Brothers. That is yours. Why don't we hold that up to have pictures taken? Take your time, everybody. Don't be shy if you want to step forward to get a good picture. Okay, great. Elizabeth, I have for you the gold plaque we give, or plate that we give out every year and a little stand to help you display that in your home, and also the proclamation itself. Would you like to say something?
Sure.
All right. I feel a speech coming on.
Thank you all for coming here tonight and supporting me. I'm completely blown away and shocked.
What the?
I'm proud to be a member of this community, and 18 years ago, almost 18 years ago, I lost my son, and this community rallied around us, and they helped us through that time in our lives. It was very hard for us, but they surrounded us with love and took care of everything we needed so that we could heal and grieve. And when I got back on my feet, I knew that it was going to be my mission in life to help other children and our community. And when the Santa Fund asked me to become a part of their board, I've... It's been the best experience of my life. We help so many children with so many different things. We provide winter, brand-new, beautiful winter gear for 700-plus children annually. And we help with enrichment, and when people are in dire straits, we get the call and we come to the rescue. And I am honored, and every single one of you deserves to be up here with me because you guys are amazing. And Andrea, she's my soul sister. She said, "Hey," to me one day, "Do you want to join the Santa Fund?" And then a few years later, I had dropped a bunch of cereal off to the Salvation Army because they were in need of some breakfast food because another board member, Lisa Cornish, had put something out there that they needed some breakfast food, so we stopped by and dropped some stuff off. And Andrea saw us from Ohio doing this, and she called me immediately and said, "Hey, I think I want to do something with you." And when she got home, we started planning, and we had four Cereal Heroes grow into 18 Cereal Heroes. And those of you who haven't heard of them, they do amazing things in the community, and they have amazing support system and parents that travel all around to help us. They provide thousands of breakfast bars to the school districts, and they've helped other students through other issues in their life. And they're just out there spreading kindness, and I'm just honored, so honored, to be here tonight. And I just thank every single one of you for supporting me because I wouldn't be here without all of your support, so thank you.
Oops, I ended up with the proclamation. That's yours. Elizabeth, thank you. And before we go on with the rest of our meeting, we'll take a couple of minutes here to allow those of you who would like to go in the hallway and congratulate Elizabeth to do so, okay? Thank you.
Well, have a seat.
Well, have a seat.
Hell, we needs one grenade.
Always amazing, but this one's even more amazing.
I don't know how you keep it secret.
Scott, can you run out and encourage people to get in the hallway?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on with our regular agenda items now. The first item would be acceptance of minutes from previous meetings. Before you tonight, councilors, are the minutes for our meeting on November twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. Those minutes were distributed by the clerk two days later, and as of tonight, there have been no corrections or changes, suggested changes submitted to her. So unless there are any at this hour, I'm going to declare the minutes to our meeting of November twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen, to be accepted as drafted by the clerk. We have no consent and action items on the agenda tonight, so our next order of business is citizens' comments for matters not on tonight's agenda. This is the appropriate place in our agenda tonight for anyone to rise and address the council who wants to speak to a topic that is not, not on tonight's agenda. And I would remind you that, that both the short-term rental issue and the historic district, overlay district are on tonight's agenda, so that if any of you are here to address those items tonight, they will be, that topic will come up at a later time. Representative St. Clair.
Thank you. I'll make this very quick. It was on the agenda la, I didn't know it was going to be on the agenda at the last council, but you guys talked about the banner polls, and I, I'm under the impression that they're looking at other alternatives to perhaps a new price or something, new bids, I guess is what I want to say.
Not necessarily new bids, we're just looking to see if there's other alternatives we can be looking at.
Okay. So I just, it was mentioned that what the banner polls were going to be used for, and all I heard was Pumpkin Fest, perhaps Motorcycle Week, and I think maybe one other item, but I just want to make sure that you don't forget about the fact that those polls that are unconquered are used almost weekly for different announcements. And I think right now, we could be using them for Christmas, New Year's. I mean, there's just all kinds of stuff, not, not to mention announcing an election coming up. There's just so many things, so I just didn't want the council to lose, lose that thought. And I realize it's expensive, and I've been trying to think of ways we can come up with the other seventeen thousand dollars, I believe that's what, it was over the allowed amount. So, that in mind, that's all I wanted to just remind you all of. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the council on a matter that is not on tonight's agenda? No? Okay. Interviews tonight. We have one interview tonight. Sarah Jenna is currently an alternate on the planning board, having been first appointed to that position in two thousand eighteen. She is now requesting appointment as a regular member of the planning board. In addition to the vacant term that Mrs. Jenna is applying for, there is one additional regular member position available, but there are no other applicants at this time. So we welcome Ms. Jenna, and note for the record, as we always do before interviewing candidates, we simply ask that they identify themselves and tell us why they would like to serve or continue serving, and, and be in a position to answer any questions that might come their way from the city council. And we, we do interviews typically as a matter of procedure on the first Monday, our first Monday meeting of each month, and, and we hold elections on the second meeting of the month, so we don't hold elections and interviews on the same night. And candidates are not required in any way to be present for the second meeting, or more than welcome to attend, but it's not required. So, again, welcome to Mrs. Jenna, and if you can introduce yourself and tell us why you'd like to be a permanent member of the planning board.
Sure. My name is Sarah Jenna, and I live at forty-five Chapin Terrace. I think I've been on a planning board for a little over a year, and I'd like to continue to participate in that. I like being involved in the city, and I, there's nowhere else I'd rather be at eleven o'clock at night. Mr. Bounds over there, you know? But in all seriousness, I like being involved and knowing what's going on, and it's a good way to kind of keep in touch with everything.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Mrs. Jenna? Councilwoman?
I just want to comment that I think you've been an exceptional member of the planning board, and I appreciate your commitment to the city of Laconia. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman?
Thank you.
He said it for you.
Said what I wanted to find out, and that's, that's great. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you for coming. Thank you for your service to date, and thank you for coming tonight. Okay, we have two public hearings tonight to conduct. The first is which is a public hearing regarding ordinance two thousand nineteen dash two thirty-five to amend City Code zoning, two thirty-five, adding a new section M dealing with short-term lodging and adding a new definition for the same at two thirty-five dash thirteen. Notice that this public hearing was made available in the November twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen edition of the Laconia Daily Sun, and posted at City Hall, the Community Center, the Laconia Public Library, and the S.A.U. office. I will alert councilors to the fact that the actual ordinance package starts back on page twenty-six with the staff report, and the language starts on page twenty-seven and runs for several pages. All right. So, just quickly, by, by, by way of explanation, at present, short-term rentals are not allowed in the city of Laconia in most residential areas. The exception to that at present is, under any circumstances, the exception to that is in the, the so-called shorefront residential area on either side of the Weir's Channel and in the so-called commercial resort area, which extends all the way up Weir's Boulevard and includes much of the commercial business on both ends of Endicott Street and Weir's Beach. The rest of the, in the rest of the city, such activity is and has been for many years now been prohibited. What we have before us tonight is a proposed ordinance that allows that activity in some, in residential areas of the city under special conditions, the most obvious one being a provision that it would be permitted as a matter of right in owner-occupied buildings. That's probably the biggest single change, but there are others. So, at this point in time, I'm going to declare the public hearing open at seven thirty-three P.M. and ask if there's anyone who wishes to address the council tonight on the matter of the proposed short-term rental zoning ordinance change.
Mr. Mayor, before we do that, on page thirty of the pack at the suggested amendments, are those also open for comment for the public?
They have not been introduced to the public at this point in time. Anyone? I see a hand.
Good evening, gentlemen. Neil Pankhurst, the artistic director of the Winnebago Playhouse, and also owner of a property in Laconia. I just wanted to, I know I've been before you before, I just wanted to make a couple, couple of points in terms of where, what you're thinking of doing here. I just wanted to think about the fact that this, this area, in my opinion, has become, is, has become, and is, and has always been, a tourist area. And I would like to think that as things develop, that you, as a council, can understand that, that things might want to change. I applaud the fact that we are trying to, you are trying to make difficult decisions. The only thing that, that I have real problem with, from both my own personal perspective and also the perspective maybe in general, is, is the owner-occupied portion of it. I understand that if, currently, it's not, it's not legal. You need to make some regulations, and that's important. But I'm not entirely sure I agree with this statement that I read in the paper, where certain members of the council feel that most of the people having an interest in this are outside-of-state investors. My research and my talking to people would suggest, to the contrary of that, that most people actually live pretty locally to here, myself included, and that either they have been properties that have been in their household for many, many years, and maybe has been, have come down the generations, or they are maybe second homeowners, or they are people who have, which would be owner-occupiers, a room to rent in their property. It would, it would seem to me that what you're suggesting in the regulations that you've come up with right now is something that would essentially be allowing bed and breakfast, probably without the breakfast. And that, that would be where we're going. So the only, the only portion of it I have, I guess I have a problem with, as somebody who lives very local, is, is the fact that you only can, the only way you can do this is if you're an owner-occupier. I, I, having spoken to Councilor Bounds some time ago, you know, what I think came out of the planning board from them had some pretty good regulations in it, and I also have heard that there's a possibility of, of some sort of exceptions to this. But I just sort of feel from a, wanting to sort of push Laconia forward and thinking about the fact that, you know, as I said to you last time, that is, this is not anymore an industrial town or manufacturing town, you know, we just, we have one mill just across the way here, where the architect of the Winnebago Playhouse now has offices, another mill, my education director lives in it. And so most of the manufacturing that used to happen here has been replaced by other things, and one of the things that clearly has been replaced is, is tourism. And I think that it'd be foolish probably to try and buck against that trend and say, you know, "We don't want tourism here," because I think you do. Most of the people that come to, to the property that we, the theater, I own for the theater, it comes, happens to come in the, in the wintertime, and most of them are skiers, and most of them go up to the mountain right by us, Gunstock. Do we want to send them somewhere else because they have, they don't want to stay, you know, they, well, maybe they don't have the ability to stay in other places? So I just, I just put that out there to try and, as you're making a decision, think about the sort of the forward momentum that the city should have. Thank you for your time. Well done, everybody.
Can I ask you a few questions?
Councilor Bounds, you can always ask me questions.
For, I, I understand that the main purpose for the house is for housing for your cast and crew during your summer production season.
Correct.
And how long is that for?
It, it's normally from the beginning of June to the end of August, beginning of September.
So you're talking about three months, June, July?
Three, three to three and a half months.
Three and a half months. And, not that anybody's going to chase you down about this, but when you do rentals over the winter months, what's the general duration of them?
Most of the ones we have had, I understand, not legally to this point, have been for a weekend or a week, Thanksgiving week, for example, some, yeah, so between, between two to seven days is most of the, most of them.
And what platform are you using?
Now you're getting into the nitty-gritty, David.
You don't have to answer any of the questions.
Airbnb.
Okay. And in terms of enforcement, what kind of opportunities Airbnb give, give you to enforce folks who are abusing the privilege of living in your home?
So Airbnb has a way of, you, the, the guests will say what they felt of the property, about the property, and you, as the hosts, will talk about, on the same platform, how, how they left the property, whether there was any problems with them, and neither of those reviews can be seen by either party until you have both completed the, the review. Once that, once both parties have reviewed it, then it becomes public to both parties. It's not in the interest of, of anybody that has a property to have difficult guests. In fact, quite the contrary, you know, there are people who, if they were to get a bad review, would not get to go into another property, because me, as a host, would be able to see the fact that they've had a bad review and wouldn't want those people in, in our property.
So, in the, in the months in which you're not housing your cast and crew or whatever for your summer productions, have you had any, okay, speaking of the microphone, have you had any difficulties with any of your tenants? And if so, what resources did you have to address them?
We haven't, and the, in fact, recently, we, when we go in at the end of their stay, we sometimes go and wonder if they've even stayed there, because it was like, it's immaculate, immaculately kept. Having myself been to other areas, mostly Canada, where we've done some Airbnb ourselves, you know, I know as a, as a guest, I want to keep that property looking as nice as it possibly is, because I do want a good review, I want to be able to go to other places. Yeah, the last couple, at least the last three or four times I've gone in, I've looked around and gone, it looks like I've got nothing to do. I still do it, I still clean it, you know, from top to bottom every single time, but it always looks like I don't even have to do anything half the time.
So do you go in before rental comes in and after the rental leaves?
Correct.
And you do that regularly?
Correct. Yeah, so the house that we have in Laconia is cleaned more regularly than my own house, because every single time somebody goes in there and it leaves, it's then cleaned from top to bottom. And again, as I think I've sort of said last time I was here, it's, again, in, in the interest of anybody that has a rental property, particularly if it's an entire house, that it's kept and looks nice, because it needs to be, you know, otherwise, the people won't want to stay there. So I think, you know, in terms of its curbside appeal, most of the properties that you'll find are going to look nice.
So, and I know you don't live in Laconia, but you live locally, you live here in Meredith.
Meredith, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
May I ask you a question also as a follow-up?
Certainly, certainly, yeah.
In the, in the summer months, how many people are calling this building home?
So, the property has five bedrooms, and so we have approximately, well, not approximately, we have ten people in the, in the house. We are, as I've said in the past here, we were very, we're very lucky to partner with the Lakes Region Community College, who give us two of their properties as well. So we have, they're both double rooms as well, so we have four people there. And we used to partner with the Taylor community, until, as I said to you last time, that their stock went down from thirty-two houses a few years ago to actually zero.
Maximum capacity is ten people?
Correct.
All right. So when you advertise this property in the winter as for rent on Airbnb, what do you say the capacity is?
Ten. 10.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Good evening. My name is Paula Heiser and I think I've spoken in front of most of you before. Before I start, I want to say congratulations on the Colonial Theater because that is a tremendous, tremendous accomplishment. And I'm looking forward to seeing how that impacts our community. I did have a chance to go over this in some detail and I do have some questions about it. For myself personally, I fall under the, the category of owner occupied, but I still have some concerns about some of the other members of our community that maybe don't fall under that category, like Neil, for example, and some other people. And I wanted to know, first of all, it seems like we went from the, the issue being problem properties, party properties, to sort of pivoting into something different about concern, you know, concerns about long-term rentals, I mean, short-term rentals, damaging the fabric of the community. And I'd like to know if you've done any research and if you have any, any numbers that support that concern.
I don't, I don't know that I can cite any specific research. What I can tell you is that it would not take a very period of time of online research to come to the conclusion that many, many cities across the United States have expressed the exact same concern that members of this city council has in terms of destroying the fabric of the community by taking from housing stock primarily, that we're in short supply. The most recent example of that council was made aware of this past week is the city of Boston, which has just passed an ordinance that almost, is almost word for word, from what I can tell anyway, the same as ours in terms of permitting owner occupancy, but their stated goal is to prevent non-residents from buying investment property in their community for the express purpose of running a motel in a residential area, and they have no intention whatever of living in the property.
Correct. And, and I, I don't disagree with that. I think what happens though is we've got a lot of people who sort of fall into that in-between space, whether it's a person who lives in Boston but has a second home up here and maybe they need to rent it out just a little bit to help pay their mortgage or offset their taxes, things like that. How do you think you're going to deal with, you know, that?
Well, and I think anecdotally, we were, I was certainly surprised and, and I thought it was very much instructional that the two communities, gated communities in our city, Southdown Shores and Lake and Long Bay communities, that we thought, I thought, I should speak for myself, would be very much based on people coming to meetings and testifying and whatnot, would be, would not like to have as second, largely second homeowner communities, would not like to have that restricted. In fact, what happened was there are two major community associations, both met and voted unanimously, that they did not want short-term rentals in their neighborhood. That's Southdown and Long Bay. So if they don't want it, that tells you a lot right there.
Well, I think Southdown and Long Bay are kind of unique in a lot of ways. And they have the, the ability to input covenants in place because there are associations in there anyway, right? So if they wanted to do that, they don't need legislation from, from the city.
They don't. But there are some neighborhoods in Southdown where it is, it is legal to do so by their own rules. And the, the message that we got, that, that our planning director got from those two community associations was they don't want looser restrictions from the city level because they're, they're having a hard time enough as it is dealing with short-term rentals from the few areas in their developments where it is permitted, and they don't want it proliferating.
So my overall feeling about Airbnb and the other short-term rental platforms are that they do a really good job of bringing high-quality people into this community and that we are a tourist community. And the amount of money that comes in as a result of these platforms, I think shouldn't be ignored. Not only does it create income for people who are running the Airbnb, it's supporting our downtown community businesses, our restaurants and so on. And I think that we struggle so much with Laconia that we need to do everything we possibly can to try and support our local businesses. And I think that these platforms do a good job of doing that. I've been a very proud owner of an Airbnb for a number of years without any incident. And I, I think that if it's done correctly, that it's, it's a positive for the community. I've been talking with Carmen Gifford about issues around, you know, nuisance properties and things like that and how to do best practices. And she has volunteered to help set up a community program for people who would like to be involved in short-term rentals and we can sit around and do best practices and teach people how to do it right. The other thing with Airbnb is they've just passed a, a bill for themselves stating that they're no longer going to allow anything that is a party house on their platform. That's going to be prohibited. So I think they're taking steps as well to try and, you know, eliminate nuisance problems, you know, nuisance hosts and, and nuisance, you know, guests. So there's, you know, things in, that can be done in order to mitigate any problem properties. And, you know, of all the properties that we have in Laconia that have, that are doing it right now, we've only had one incident, maybe a couple, two incidents that have really been problematic and they were pretty quickly taken care of, from my understanding. So that was all I wanted to say about that. The other thing I think we should consider is...
Ask you to be cognizant of other people's time, please?
Yes. The other thing I wanted to talk about was there is people that are, you know, doing gig economy stuff that are here tonight, who have made a career of cleaning and supporting Airbnbs along the way. And I'd like to just recognize them as well. I have a couple of questions regarding the actual proposal, one of which is the parking. I think you stated in the last meeting that onsite or the offsite parking was going to be, you could only have as many parking spaces as you were, as you could get off of the property. And I wanted to know if that was going to be during the day as well, or if that was just for evenings and winter?
Dean, you want to answer that? You're the most qualified to answer a parking question, or in the technical weeds here. Let him get to the microphone, please.
The... There would be nothing to prevent someone from using on-street parking during the day year-round, but the issue becomes, we have a very significant timeframe in the city where on-street parking is not allowed overnight. So if there's room in the driveway for two cars and then there's three cars, there's no place for the third car to go. And that, that's the issue. It's not so much daytime parking as it is the overnight parking. That's the issue.
So the answer to your question apparently is no, it doesn't cover daytime, only night.
Yeah, that, that answers my question. And then I just wanted to ask you too, like, I think you've done a really good job as far as outlining the, the review process and so on. I just had a question about whether or not you're going to need both the fire department and the, the, what's the other? Thank you. Do they both need to be involved in that?
Again, a technical question.
It's a joint, it's a joint inspection.
Okay, so it's not going to be both departments, it's one?
One inspection.
One inspection.
One inspection, okay. And then I had somebody ask me a question on this and I don't know if, if somebody doesn't fall within these guidelines, what's the timeframe going to be before they have to stop if they've already got people that are booked into their places?
Well, I think our, I think our, our purpose here is that, that we get the ordinance at least in its base form in, in, to effect as soon as possible, so that everybody knows what the, what the rules are going to be for next summer, so to speak, now.
Right.
Okay. So, and to give everybody as many months as possible lead time to determine, you know, this is what I can and I can't do as far as the summer season is concerned. And what was, what was the rest of your question?
Well, I think, you know, we book these things way out in advance on these platforms. And so there's going to be people, if they don't fall within the category, they may have had bookings already for, you know, months in advance. And so would they have to cancel those or could they continue on?
Well, I would think that would be, I mean, I'm just editorializing here, but I think it would be a matter of, of, you know, if, if, if somebody had a, somebody already booked for March or April or something like that, I think probably no one would complain.
Okay.
I'm not to say that, but if we get to summer and suddenly there's a house on Pogus Park Road that becomes an issue, and the neighbors complain about it and whatnot, that, that, once it's looked into, the planning department would send a cease and desist order to that owner immediately. And, and assuming it was in violation or found to be in violation, and fines would start piling up.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
All right.
Good evening. I'm Bill Bald, President Melchon Prescott, also on the board at the hospital in Bell Nap County Economic Development. Just looking for a little clarification. And once again, you guys are tackling a tough task. I grew up in the Adirondacks. Lake Placid has tried to, tried to deal with the same issue for the last year. I'm not sure if you guys are aware of that. They have about 700 Airbnbs in the town of Lake Placid. There was a recent study done that it does contribute about $32 million to the local economy. That being said, there are impacts on affordable housing. We have, part of our organization is just outside of Cleveland, Ohio, HR and finance. They come to the area to, to work with us, typically staying in the Marriott in Guilford. We've been contemplating buying a piece of real estate for them and to also use for Airbnb with my work at the hospital. I know we have a lot of traveling nurses coming in and out of town here. With the legislation, the way it sits right now, am I correct in my understanding that we would be precluded from being able to do that?
Only if it's 14 days or fewer.
Okay. So if, just so I understand clearly, so if the rental is for 14 days or fewer?
15, right, then you're, then you can't do it. If it's for 15 days or more, there's no problem.
Okay. So we would not be able to do a motorcycle week rental, so to speak, or anything like that?
But you would be able to, to rent to visiting nurses or visiting professionals or whatever, so long as they stayed for two weeks or more.
My other question is, i- if I've got my CFO coming in for a week to stay in this piece of property that we own and we are not charging him rent, is...
Not covered.
It's not covered. Okay. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
I'm just going to make it very quick because I heard you mention, I'm Barbara Southall and I live in Southdown.
Start over at the mic, please.
I'm Barbara Southall and I live in Southdown. I have rented my place. I also occupy it. I have never had one ounce of problems. And I do feel like it brings economy to this town. I'm also in real estate, so I'm in that part of it too, where I do sell to people that are coming up here to do the same thing. But I have rented, I've been through 10 years now, I've rented maybe eight of those years. Had people come in for two weeks, a month, never had an issue at all. Didn't have, my neighbors didn't have an issue with it. I just, you know, just wanted to give my piece on that part when I heard you say that. But...
Thank you.
Yep.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Kevin Morissette. I, I just have a concern about the owner occupied part, I guess. If, if somebody lives locally like myself and you, you know, you're a phone call away, you're only a little bit away from what you're renting out, I don't see why that's, should be held against you versus saying you have to be on the premises 24/7.
All right. Under the current ordinance, as it's currently drafted and passed on first reading, that would not be allowed. You would have to live at least 150 days on the premises to be considered owner occupied.
I have an issue with that part of it.
You don't, wouldn't have to just live in the city somewhere. You would have to live on the property.
You know, I think if you live in the city, that should be fine, instead of just having to live on the property. And, you, you know, I read through this, it seems like I got a little piece of property that's just kind of like in la-la land compared to...
Property that's what?
Just in la, you know, the rules, you know, this cottage that I have that I rent out, seasonal, you know, just doesn't seem to fit this type of thing. And here you're in the Lakes Region.
Well, stay tuned later tonight when we get to this under unfinished business, there is a amendment that is not part of the public hearing tonight because it wasn't part of the motion that was passed at our last meeting, but there's an amendment for the council to consider that takes seasonal properties into account.
Very good. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tom Siegel, 44 Village Court. I've testified here before, I'll make this really short. My preference would be to preserve the residential neighborhoods and not allow short-term rental businesses at all. We still have people who live here year-round and raise their families in neighborhoods. However, I do appreciate what you've done and I would support the ordinance with the owner occupied for the one to 14 days. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the brevity. Quick and to the point. Anyone else?
My name is Sarah Rosenblum. I've also been before the council on this issue. I was one of the neighbors of the problem house that kind of brought this all to the forefront. And I like what you've done with the, I think that the, the rules that are before the council tonight have addressed a lot of the issues. I do know that when this problem arose, it was tremendously helpful to have zoning ordinances in place that allowed for this property use to be shut down. Because if it's just, we'll call the police every time there's a noisy group there, you end up calling weekend after weekend after weekend and there's no way to stop that unless you have something with teeth in it. So I think it is important to allow for the worst case as well as the best case. I do, I've used Airbnb a lot and I think it's a great innovation. I do think that there are obvious problems with it that have arisen in other cities and in our city. And I think that having owner occupied, requirements of owner occupation does address a, a lot of the problems because people have a vested interest in, in preserving the community. I also think perhaps making a process for an exemption, you know, an exception, might cover some of the problems where you have, like the Winnebago Playhouse, wanting to use the property and not having any issues, so that perhaps there's a way for owners that aren't, where the neighbors don't object, where the, there's no problems, where you could have short-term rentals that don't meet the requirements. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Dorothy Duffy, Laconia, Whuplevon. I've communicated with you quite often. I didn't intend to speak tonight, but it occurred to me, when this started, people were presenting their need for short-term rentals because they had hardships. We're talking an awful lot about income-producing property now. I'm wondering, it seems to me that the shift is, is going towards satisfying the tourists that are coming to the community or the guests, more so than it is the locals that live here on a yearly basis, the ones that support the city every single day. So I, I hope you think about that a little bit when you're making your choice. The other thing is, if this is incom- The other thing is, if this is income-producing an investment, are they filing income on their tax returns? And how does the city gain besides a $200 fee for every two years? Also, if you picture all the single-family homes in the community and you're putting a short-term rental here and a short-term rental there and a short... It's fragmented. Everybody is involved. And whether they like it or not, they're involved. We have tourism. We love tourism. We need tourism. We've had it for years. It's been clearly defined in areas where people live. Actually, they like to stay where they could walk to sites. So we still have tourism. We still have tourism sites. I'm not quite pleased with the last amendments that you made. I don't think 14 days is enough time. I've been reading where some communities are upping the number of days to 120 after they started and had some problems. You can read in the papers almost daily where new problems crop up. The main problem is, without the kind of regulation that you have in hotels and motels, you don't really have control. And also there's a lack of employment. If somebody's renting their own house and cleaning their own property and doing the other services, it may be putting somebody else out of service. But the major problem that I see in the future is that you are cutting away an awful lot of affordable housing for people. So you want people to come here. You want employment to come here. You want jobs to come here, but there's no place for, they can afford to live. Saw this in the late 80s when people had to move away from their communities because they couldn't afford to work in them because they were working in McDonald's and service industry jobs. I think Laconia is, is making some major improvements now, Lakeport is. And I don't think it just says tourism. And we don't have to become a tourist neighborhood. The whole community doesn't have to be. I also think that owner occupied is very important, very important. And I think that if you want to keep the single-family status, you need to keep it. People move into single-family communities because the label is single-family communities. They trust them. They know what they're getting. They know with, how the children are going to relate to the neighbors' children and schools. Also, what I notice is a lot of people that are moving and renting have no place to park. And if there's a garage, they can't get in the garage. The cars and the vehicles are too big for the garage. They have these big trucks. So that wipes away some of the parking that they have. There's a lot of little problems. I think you're doing a wonderful job. I think the regulation has to be done. And I don't, I feel sorry for you having to make a decision for everybody, people that are opposed to some of the things like me and people that gain from things, from having it and all support it. But there you go. Your last big problem before you leave this council, mayor?
Only me.
It's not on you, but you may be a deciding vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Tom Lau. I guess you can consider me seasonal. We have a place in the, just outside of the channel that my grandfather bought over 80 years ago. My two siblings and I can no longer afford to keep it because of the taxes that are so high. So we decided Airbnb it to try and get enough money to be able to keep the damn house in the family. I think we're lucky we're in the CR section. But 14 days is, is too long for helping the tourists. We're also supporting property managers here.
14 days wouldn't apply to you, sir.
I, I realize that, but there's, there's a bunch of people here that it would. You support property managers. People help us clean the house so that we can turn it over quickly. I was wondering what, what problem you were trying to fix. And it, it sounds like there isn't a problem that you can really put your finger on.
And that is the same problem that everyone else in the country is trying to address.
Party houses.
Well, no, it has nothing to do, well, to some people it's about party houses, but that's not the issue. The issue is the nationwide phenomena of houses in residential neighborhoods being sold to doctors and lawyers and who don't live in the community and in some cases don't even live in the state as investment properties that they have no intention of ever living in. So they, you know, you get a phone call saying, "I can buy this house for $300,000 in Laconia or $250,000 and whatnot, and I'll show you how you're going to make money on it because I'll handle it for you. You're going to run Airbnb there. You never have to visit the place. I'll take care of all the details. You'll just be the owner." And the argument is that that takes life out of the community primarily by taking housing stock, which we're in very short supply of, out of the community and devoting it to people who are never, ever going to contribute to the community life.
That may be, but one of the problems is nobody else can afford them. You got the taxes so high that people can't even afford to live here. You've got retired people along the shore. They're out.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
Ruben Bassett. I have also spoken to the council before on this issue and just wanted to kind of reiterate a couple of things to you before you vote. I have, between my wife and I, over the past couple of years, we have spent time in San Francisco, Boston, South Carolina, North Carolina, Vermont, Maine, Pennsylvania, all Airbnbs. All communities that people want to go visit and people want to live in, for the most part. I think this council in other areas has done a lot of things to move Laconia forward in a way that attracts families to this community and year-round residents. My fear is that this, this piece of legislation is an illusion, that you think that you're going to preserve your year-round residents and year-round population by this legislation, and it's not true. There are other areas that you need to be focusing on. This is an area that does bring money into the, the community, and it brings people who we do want to have here. There are a couple of problem houses that have had, and we do need to address those. I, I commend you for saying, hey, this needs to be legalized and we need to regulate it in some form. We need to have a system in order to approve it. But the more and more that we attach to this by trying to solve other problems, that's my concern. You're saying, okay, year-round resident. Well, what about me? What if I said my duplex, I want to change from a year-round residency to Airbnb? I can't do that because I'm two towns over. I'm not going to be involved. I'm pretty heavily involved in this community. Now, at this time...
It's not that you're not involved. The people who live there two days, three days at a time are never going to be involved.
Okay. And what is the problem of having those people come to our community and experiencing our city in a different way than they could from staying in a hotel or staying in a motel?
Nothing. There are plenty of opportunities available to them throughout the Lakes region.
But not in this community?
In the, in the Weers area, yes.
And that's my point, is you're limiting it to what you think that people should want and where people should want to spend. It's a, it's, it's something that exists already and we're behind the eight ball trying to address it. And so now we're going to over-correct to try and, and preserve it and try and legislate something that this piece I don't think should be intended. You have supported schools. You have supported fire. You have supported police. These are the areas that we need to continue to focus on in order to attract families. We need to improve our housing stock. Absolutely. I know you, mayor personally, I've been on a, a committee with you where you have tried to address these in other ways to say, let's improve our housing stock. Let's find affordable housing for people. Regulating this in this way in a, in a restrictive manner is not going to accomplish what you want it to. It's an illusion and that, that's my fear here, is that you're, you can't sit by and think that this is going to solve it by making it more restrictive for people to do different things with their property. That's my concern. So I know that we're trying to address a problem, but we're expanding it too greatly and making it too restrictive. And I caution you on that because you have done so many other things to move us forward. Don't make us take step backs.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name's Mark Barley. I live at 68 Warren Street. Some of the people here have touched on the timeframe. You say that the Weers operates normally. There's no timeframe, no time limits for any of those guys down there. Some of us that live on this side of the Weers, we can't afford the million-dollar properties that are down there, okay? So when you tell them that they don't have to worry about the number of days, the number of times, then you tell us that basically just, it's economic equality, inequality, you know? I can't make the same money they can because I live on this side of the tracks.
I categorically reject that argument. There are many campgrounds, trailers, et cetera, in the commercial resort area and in the shorefront residential district. It's not all mansions.
You're correct, but they don't have a time limit.
A wide variety of housing options.
They don't have a time limit or the number of times that you're proposing.
Well, but you seem to be suggesting that we were simply making an exception for rich people, and that's crazy. It's not true.
So I can't afford a house down on the Weers, but I can afford my $75,000 house.
Maybe you can't afford one on Shore Drive either.
No, I can't. But I live on a section of town that you say this is illegal, which it is, okay? But you're trying to limit me to the number of times that I can have somebody rent my room. So when you do that, you put an economic sanction on me.
How are we doing that, sir?
Because you tell me I can only do it so many times a year.
We're not. That's not part of the ordinance.
14 days, exactly.
No. Each stay has to be more than, less, well, if, because you're owner occupied, correct?
Correct.
You're not even covered by it.
But you also said in the original that somebody could only do it 18 times a year.
No, that was taken out.
Exactly. But you're still trying to limit the number of times people can do it.
No. There's nothing in there that limits the number of times people can do it. Nothing.
No. Maybe I misread it then.
Other than mathematics. I mean, in terms of, if you can only do it 14 days or more at a time, if you're not owner occupied, then divide that by a year and it'll tell you how many times you can do it. Anyone else? Okay. I'm going to declare the public hearing closed then at 22:00 PM. And note for everyone's, uh, information that we will take this up again tonight under unfinished business. Second public hearing we have tonight is with regard to ordinance 235-21.1, amending chapter 235 zoning to create a new section, 21.1, establishing a historic overlay district and accompanying commission. Notice of this public hearing was made available in the November 27, 2019 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun and posted at City Hall, the Community Center, the Public Library, and at the SAU office. So this counselor's is, starts on page 31 of your packet. And the actual meat of the proposed ordinance starts on page 32 and goes for many pages, including on page 45. And before we open the public hearing, there was some confusion. I'm looking to staff on this, please. There was some confusion in our last meeting when Counselor Hamel was reading from the material that we have in front of us. And I guess the point he was trying to make was that it was overly regulatory in terms of the depth of minutia that was, would be covered by buildings in the historic district. And then we heard later, after the meeting was over, that in fact, he may have been reading not from the proposed ordinance, but from some sort of language in the ordinance that indicates what's not covered by the ordinance. So is that true or where, where do we stand on that? Is there actual language in here that really isn't in the ordinance at all?
No, Mr. Mayor. The, the language is for clarifying as to what is allowed, what's, what's under the purview of a, of a historic district commission and what is not. So I think if you turn to page 36 of your agenda packet.
Okay.
Is that activity within the...
Right. So if you look up at the top, it is, the heading, two lines down from the top on page 36 says, "Purview of the commission." And it talks about which things are. So the exterior architectural appearance, appearance, freestanding light structures, removals of walls or a fence, those things are. If you turn to page 37, under capital B, and look at the heading, it very clearly in the bold says, "Activity exempt from review." And these are the items where it says, "No review or certificate of approval shall be required for the following." And this ran down everything from painting or staining a building when the color won't change, utility poles, flagpoles, mailboxes, air conditioners, new roofing materials where the color will not change significantly.
Okay. So the authors felt it necessary not only to say what was covered, but to at least make an attempt to say what was not covered.
They were trying to be very clear that there was more big-picture focus and not into the minutia, so to speak. So that got blended together.
So we all have an understanding of that in case it comes up tonight. Counselor Hamel?
That was true. The only thing, though, is under the exemptions also, on number four, it says, "Situation on a building or in a lot that no part of them will be visible from the public street within historic district." So in other words, all these items here, if this is passed and these things happen to be visible from a street, then they're part of this activity within, that's reviewable. If it's not visible, then I guess it's okay. But we don't know, I don't know what's visible or not visible. So, you know, I might have blended these together, but I think a lot of these things here are still viable as part of, of review and not totally exempted. It all depends on whether or not you can see it from the street, whether it's, the leaves are on the trees or not, which it states any time of year. So it's still, in a way, part of it. If we, if we overlay this on a broad area, it could be a problem.
Okay. Just for the, for a brief, very brief overview, the purpose of this ordinance is to create a historic overlay district, which would be Laconia's first. And as the, as the district is currently defined in the ordinance before the council, it would include all of the land, starting to the west, including the train station, Veterans Park, moving to the east, Laconia Public Library and co-including the annex to the library, the Buzzill Mansion, which most recently has been the home for the parish priest, St. Andrew Basset Parish, the St. Joseph Church, and the now vacant Holy Trinity School. So those buildings are the ones that are envisioned to be a part of this original historic district. And the ordinance would also create a commission to look over, appointed by the council, to look over the enactment of that ordinance and the, officiate over that ordinance and make sure that people are adhering to the guidelines that are outlined in the ordinance. So I'm going to open this public hearing at 8:20. Was that nine?
Nope. 8:28.
8:28 PM. Thank you. And ask if there's anyone who would like to offer testimony tonight to the City Council on the matter of the historic overlay district. I see people pointing at each other. No one is rising. Tara, you're it. Tara, you're it.
Tag. Tara Shore, Adam Street. I do have a question on a point of order, if I could ask, please. If I speak now, but then afterwards feel that I'd like to speak again, I can do that? With time permitting?
You can, you can do it now during the public hearing.
Yes, that's what I mean.
Speak again, technically you could also speak again. Hopefully not too many people will take us up on that when we get to public comment on items on tonight's agenda.
Okay.
If you wanted to speak again.
Okay.
Once we get to the item on the actual agenda under unfinished business, debate will be limited to the table unless there's unanimous consent that a member of the council wants to ask somebody in the audience a question.
Okay, great, thank you very much. So good evening. Thank you for your time tonight and allowing this public hearing process on what so many of us agree and believe to be a very important addition to Laconia city statutes. For eight months, our efforts have been focused on preparing and perfecting, according to the City Council and Planning Board's requests or proposal, for a historic overlay district that fits Laconia. This is the proposal we all have in hand tonight. After speaking with so many over the last two weeks, it occurred to me that perhaps not everyone has actually read the proposal or have taken a moment to research what historic districts offer to communities across the country and around the world. The benefits consistently and considerably outweigh the drawbacks, and I spoke to those during the last council meeting. Tonight, I'd like to focus on the ordinances specifically. Page one, purpose. The section speaks to the reasons to have an historic overlay district to preserve and promote historic, cultural, educational, economic, and general welfare of the community. I think everyone in the room can agree that so far, this is not only follows exactly what the master plan is for Laconia, but it aligns with what every one of us wants for our city. The section then lists how the HOD will achieve those goals just listed. The next session, section, Historic District Commission Part A, covers what the organization, membership, and procedures a commission will follow once it is established. There's not much difference here than on most any other commissioner board that is already established in Laconia. The commissioners are appointed by the City Council. The terms are listed, certain chair positions must be filled, et cetera. Historic District Commission Part B covers the powers and duties of the commission. Again, much like many other commissions or boards already in place in Laconia. Members review applications and can approve, approve with conditions, or deny them. They should consult and work with other commissions and boards, such as the Heritage Commission and Planning Board. They should conduct small area or community-wide surveys of historic architectural or cultural resources, nominate structures for listing on the state and national registers of historical places. And as a note, again, being listed on those does not actually save something from demolition. Review applications affecting property in the established district. Investigate and recommend new areas for historic districts. And educate about the historic district and preservation, among other items. Next, designation of historic district, Part A, covers procedures for designation. The how-to when designating a new district. Part B covers criteria for designation. This covers how an area is considered for designation as a historic district. There's a list of criteria, but not all properties inside the area are required to meet them. Next, the identification of historic overlay district. In short, this is the part that describes with map locations and detailed language where inside the city is the district located. Part A covers location boundaries, explains the language used in describing the location. Part B gives the language and then the map lots as listed on the Laconia city tax map. Purview of the commission, what the commission oversees. Part A discusses activity within the district subject to review. This seems to be the most contentious section at this time. These are the listed items that require approval by the HTC, the Historic District Commission, for activities and structures inside the district. Before going further, please keep in mind that historic overlay districts are put into place to manage change, not stop it, and that historic overlay districts help cities evolve with its character intact appropriately. Also keeping in mind that the preservation of the character of a historic district is top priority. The review list was carefully looked at and discussed. We kept the preservation of the character of the area we were thinking about as the top priority. The preservation of the character, not to stop any change to it, just the preservation of its character. You can still do things to some places and keep the character alive. The consensus was the front facade of the buildings holds the character of them and therefore, the list of reviewed items focuses on changes to the front of the buildings. The change, to change the facade drastically would deteriorate the character that we want to preserve. It could, I misused a word there. That said, we made sure to add that the commission must recognize and reasonably allow equipment for new or future technology. We spent a lot of time discussing the fact that we understand that we have a lot of businesses in this city. We have a lot of, obviously, building owners. We don't want to stop them from growing. We just want to help them think about how they can grow and keep the character of this city intact. Part B covers exemptions for review. Yes, there are exemptions. We live here too, we own property as well, and the focus on character was, again, the priority in this section. For example, if you are doing general maintenance to the property and nothing you are doing will significantly change the outward appearance, there's no review. If you have a commercial residential structure that does not contribute significantly to the character of the district and you want to paint your home purple, no review. Exemptions that are not explicitly mentioned in this ordinance, because they fall under state law, is State RSA six-seven-four dot five-four, number two or part two, I don't remember how they say it. Does a town or city have to follow its own zoning ordinance? No, as long as it is performing a governmental function. The New Hampshire Supreme Court has held that New Hampshire municipalities are not bound by their own zoning ordinances when performing governmental functions unless there is a regulation requiring municipal compliance. I could certainly be mistaken, but I believe this exempts the Laconia Public Library from having to comply with the historic overlay district ordinances. We know that they have taken incredible care to this beautiful building's character during the construction of the addition. We will hope that the next generation will do the same. The next few sections cover the procedures for review, should there be one. A basic how-to and what is needed should a review of a project be required. Reviewing an application, action on an application, appeals, and enforcement are all covered here. Standards for review is also covered. This is the commission, this is for the commission to follow, and these are adapted from the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Preservation of Historic Buildings. This isn't a piece that we made up. This is actually language taken from something that's already in place. Elements of Design is specific to this district and this area. It gives the commission an overview of what to consider when new construction is proposed. It discusses scale, proportions, and building materials. New construction. This section states that new construction is essential in a vital community. We understood that, we know that, it's absolutely vital, we want it. And it is, it is, the proposed historic overlay district only asked that it be respectful to the historic fabric of the area it is in. So we want it, but we would like some thought process to it before bulldozing it or putting on a three-foot addition in front of, on the front of the Buzzell Mansion. Demolition or removal, this is the section that started it all. With a historic overlay district, a building or structure cannot be demolished or moved until approval has been granted by the Historic District Commission. And a plan for what will be put in the building's place is provided for review. There are circumstances such as a fire has caused the structure to be dangerous and uninhabitable that demolish must occur. One of the last sections covers the responsibility of the building owner. Basically, it is asking our community to simply maintain their buildings and keep them out of disrepair and deterioration. Had a historic overlay district been in place in nineteen eighty-two, when the Lakes Region Planning Commission proposed a set of historic districts for Laconia, the Colonial Theater could very well have not have progressed to the deterioration that it did, causing a detrimental effect upon the special character of our main street, which, thank goodness, as of tonight's announcement, that special character will continue to grow, which it is continuing to grow currently. The proposed ordinances end with enforcement actions and waivers, hardship cases and appeals. Those are pretty standard, so I'll let you read those on your own. With the help of so many, I have learned a ton about local government and historic preservation. We've all worked very hard to provide information and resources to as many people as possible. To share with our community the incredible history of Laconia and what we can do to preserve the character and culture we all say that we hold so close to our hearts. A historic overlay district gives our significant structures a chance for survival. It will allow a moment to discuss and consider the consequences of change. It will encourage alternate thinking and the possibilities of reuse of beautiful buildings already standing. Laconia was not given this chance in nineteen seventy, and we all lament about it daily. Tonight, you have the ability to give Laconia the chance it should have had then. I don't envy your job tonight and I wish you good luck. And I thank you again for your time, for the last eight months.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else like to comment on this issue? Yes. I ask that speakers please be cognizant of each other's time.
Marcia Hayward, Nine Wildwood Road. As the council is aware, the town of Guilford has a historical district which has been in existence for over seventy-five years. And I have reviewed Guilford's documents and compared it to the documents that you have before you. And Guilford's document is far more restrictive than what is being considered here. I am aware of the concerns raised by residents and businesses that might be located within the proposed district. Therefore, I contacted a member of Guilford's historical district and asked, "How do you go about resolving problems with your document and what people would like to do or not do, et cetera?" And the secret for Guilford is the fact that they work cooperatively with their residents and their businesses. As an example, there was a homeowner who wanted to run a business out of their house and they had to have signage for that business. So they worked with a committee in a cooperative manner, and the two came to an agreement that was satisfactory for both. And I think that is the secret to anything, is to sit down and to work together cooperatively and come up with a solution. And that's what Guilford, I believe, does. I was a resident of Guilford for over thirty-five years, and I can attest to the pride the residents have in maintaining the heritage of that town. And I am of the opinion that if Laconia could please follow Guilford's lead and join in a cooperative manner with our residents and businesses and take pride in our heritage, this could be a very successful venture. I am in full support of this, thank you.
Thank you. Who else?
Good evening, Pam Clark, Santurus Drive. Most of you who know me know that I'm very passionate about history in Laconia. First of all, I do want to congratulate you on the Colonial Theater. I remember, I think it was about seven years ago now, at a meeting at the Belknap Mill, I issued the city a challenge to get the Colonial Theater repaired and up and running by its hundredth anniversary in two thousand and fourteen. Well, it's taken a little longer than that, but it's actually finally going to happen, so I'm very pleased with that. Besides being a historian, I'm also a preservationist. And that's what I feel the biggest purpose of this historic overlay district is, is to preserve the integrity of the city of Laconia. The area that we're talking about for this particular historic overlay district actually has, there are thirteen properties in the Laconia Weers Lakeport area that are on the National Historic Register. There are five of those properties that are in this proposed historic district. We've got the Buzzill House, the Gale Memorial Library, the Laconia Passenger Station, the U.S. Post Office, and the Evangelical Baptist Church or the Holy Grail. Five of the thirteen properties are in this small area.
Are we sure, is that, that's not the case?
That's not the case, the post office-
Well, I'm just saying they're, they're in that small area.
They're not included in this ordinance.
I'm sorry?
Two of the buildings you mentioned are not included in this ordinance.
Correct.
They're not covered by this ordinance.
Telling you that they're in the same geographic area.
Okay. The two that are not are the Evangelical Baptist Church slash Holy Grail Building and the post office.
Correct, correct. Okay. The reason I wanted to speak about the preservation is because I know most of the opposition to this historic district has been that property owners are concerned about that being, you know, too restrictive. We want to tell them what to do with their property and everything. And I'm looking at tho, the particular properties that are in this proposed district, the Public Library. They did a wonderful job with their addition that they put on to keep the integrity of the building. That's exactly what we're talking about with historic district. Those are the kinds of things we want to see. I mean, the Laconia Passenger Station, reuse of the building, but it's kept the integrity of the, the building itself.
Including the addition that was put on down on the Prescott area?
Well, I mean, it, has it damaged the look of the building? Not really, no.
So you would have approved that? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, sorry. I just know that, you know, personally, I want to see the preservation and the integrity of the city to continue. I mean, I've lived here all my life. I still have people that come up to me to this day complaining about urban renewal from fifty years ago. I know my aunt was telling me the other day that my uncle's property was the first one torn down during urban renewal, the old Dearborn's Diner where Sunrise Towers is today. You know, so I, I just, I have a vested interest in the city and I want to, want to preserve the cultural integrity of the city. And I think this historic district would do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I saw a hand in the very back row. Yes.
Mayor Engler and members of the council, I think most of you know me, I'm Marie Bradley. I am vice chairman of the Laconia Library Board. And I'm here to present the views of our board and, and my views. I, I sent all of you a letter through Nancy. I hope you had a chance to read it, so I am going to read it tonight for the benefit of the people in the audience who, you know, so they know where I'm coming from. And forgive me, I forgot my glasses, so I may struggle a little bit. As I said, my name is Marie Bradley. At our November twenty-first board meeting, our chairman brought to the attention of our board a proposed ordinance amendment for a historic overlay district that he had just learned about several days prior to our meeting. The interesting part of this ordinance amendment was that it included only four properties, one of which was the library. The other properties in the district are Saint Joseph's Church, the church rectory, and the old train station. It is my understanding that this historic overlay district was created to help save Saint Joseph's Church from demolition. But it's also my understanding that since the bishop has not withdrawn the demolition permit for this property, this amendment would have no effect in preserving this historic and iconic church. I told you I am vice chairman of the library board. I am also a parishioner of Saint Joseph's Church, now known as Saint Andre Bisset Parish. When my husband and I moved here- When my husband and I moved here forty-six years ago, one of the first actions was for me to become a parishioner of St. Joseph's Church. My children, two children, were baptized, made their first communion there. They both attended Holy Trinity School, my son for eight years and my daughter for five. During their years at Holy Trinity, my husband and I were actively involved in the church and school activities, and we were part of a large faith community. As I stand here, I can see in my mind's eye my children involved in numerous Christmas pageants, Easter services, and other activities as part of the church. What I'm saying is, the church means a lot to me, too. I'm telling you this because I'm one hundred percent behind saving St. Joseph's Church from the wrecking ball and keeping it an integral part of both the Catholic faith community and the local community as well. It has been an integral part of our city's history, and I feel it is of vital importance to preserving the historical integrity of downtown. Although I've only been on the library board for several years, as the administrative assistant to two city managers, Dan McKeever and Eileen Cabanel, who loved the city for over eighteen years, I was very well informed about the activities of the library board during those years. When it was decided to remove the old addition to the library and make it more in keeping with the main building, former chairman Bob Selick and our current chairman, John Moriarty, worked closely with the architects. With their guidance, they strictly followed the federal guidelines required to protect the historic integrity of this building. I think we can all say that they did an amazing job, and today I believe we have the finest library in the state. I can also honestly say that current and past members of the library board have worked tirelessly to be good stewards of that building and to also maintain the library trusts. The ordinance for the Historic Overlay District that is before you is a fourteen-page document that does nothing more than add another layer of bureaucracy to city government for four buildings and nothing more. Its pages contain bureaucratic entanglements that require a panel put together by the city to decide if such things as a light post or a fence on those properties can be changed only with a panel's permission. The library is already on the federal Historic Registry, as I believe St. Joseph's Rectory and the train station are as well. Since the library received public money, it is already subject to state and federal regulations on what can and cannot be done to this property. You can ask our chairman how difficult this has made construction of the new addition and how we continue to continue to work with the architects whenever an issue comes up. I know our community wants to save St. Joseph's Church, but I'm asking you not to do it by hamstringing four properties with unnecessary regulations found in the Historic Overlay District Amendment. We all know that sometimes trying to do what we think might be the right thing can cause unintended consequences. I believe this ordinance does exactly that. It has been wonderful to see people of all faiths and walks of life working together to save St. Joseph's Church, but unfortunately, the final decision is still with the bishop alone, and we can only hope he makes the right decision. In 2010, when I was working on a committee hoping to purchase the Colonial Theater, and I think Councilor Bounds and I were on that same committee back then.
I think we were.
I was working with Carmen Lorenz, and we got the Colonial Theater on the seven to save. It's something that the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance puts out, seven properties each year that they hope to save. Maybe that's something that St. Joseph's should be on. I ask you to vote against this ordinance amendment for the sake of all parties involved and in the best interest of the city, or at least to table it until a definitive resolution concerning the demolition permit. We have a definitive resolution to that. Or investigate some other alternatives that are less restrictive than this ordinance amendment. So I thank you for your consideration.
Would you take a question from Councilor Lippman, please?
Earlier this evening, it was discussed that the library would not be subject to this. Does this, do you disagree with that? And if so, why?
Do I disagree that the library?
In other words, I think it was represented because it is a municipal-related.
If that can happen, that is fine. You know, I just think you're putting layers, more layers on properties, more boards to look into issues. I mean, when I worked in the city manager's office, we had a hard enough time finding people to serve on regular boards.
Can I just?
And now you're creating another one.
So, I mean, I think the library is a strongly public-supported institution. I guess, I guess what I'm asking you is, if you're exempted from it, why would you object to it if there's a strong sense of community of having a Historic District? Why would the library be against a large part of the community?
We weren't told, we weren't told that we were going to be exempt.
Yeah, I understand, assuming you were subject to it, why you have?
And we were informed of this at very late notice, in fact. As I said, November twenty-first, just our chairman found out from our librarian, who had gone to a staff meeting, that this ordinance was going to be in place.
So could I get an opinion of the manager?
I'm sorry?
I'd like to, am I correct in my assumption that because it's a municipal-affiliated building, it wouldn't be subject at all to this?
That is correct. Municipalities are exempt from their own regulations. And I think this proposed district has been out there for months now, so I just want to state that I don't think it was a surprise, it should not have been a surprise to anybody in November as to what the district was. This has been proposed and discussed and tabled for months now.
Yeah. I just asked our chairman. We did not know.
I just know that it's been on the council agenda, and many public meetings have been held, and it's been covered in the press. So it was not something that just came in at the eleventh hour. This has been as part of the proposed district for months now.
Many months. Mr. Moriarty, you wanted to speak?
Thank you.
Well, I didn't want to take Marie's time. She had a question that I thought I could shed some light on, and I'm happy to do so, or I'm happy to wait and start.
Let's let her finish, then.
Wonderful. Right ahead.
I am finished, so thank you for, you know, your time.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thanks for being involved.
Mr. Moriarty.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, mayor-elect, members of the council, John Moriarty, speaking to you in the capacity of chairman of Laconia Public Library, Board of Trustees. And if it pleases the council, I'll start right in the middle with the question that was asked. And forgive me here, the, I know this complies with the statute and font size, but it's going to slow me down a little bit here to be, to be able to answer the question. On the last page, the section that begins, I think it says applicability to the city of Laconia, "Any property owned by the city of Laconia within the Historic Overlay District shall be subject to." So I take that to mean something different than is exempt from. So if you, I don't know if that answers your question, but to my mind, that's what I was reading.
Where are you reading from?
I'm reading from the final page of the, I downloaded this from the Laconia links this evening, about an hour before the council meeting. So this should be the draft you have in front of you, the final page. It's the fourteenth page of the document. I don't, it doesn't have a page number on it.
"Any property owned by the city of Laconia within the HOD shall be subject to the provisions this article herein, provided, however, that following a public hearing, Laconia City Council, by my majority vote of members present, vote to override the commission pertaining to such property." Is that the one?
That is the paragraph, the first line of that paragraph, in fact, that says, "City properties are subject to." Granted, there's this other mechanism of appeal. Well, there's always another mechanism of appeal, whether it's through the court system or anything else, but...
I guess the question I would have is, if we knew all along that by state law, the city would, city property would be exempt, why was this paragraph put in there?
I can't speak to that. I was not part of the committee. I can only say that I think the intent was for the integrity of the district to remain in place. But again, a municipality...
A geographical integrity?
I think it's, if it's, if the library, for instance, in this scenario, is right in the middle of the district, it would be the intent that the properties try to conform with the intent of what the Historic Overlay District was created for. But at the end day, local law cannot supersede state law, and municipalities are exempt not only from this regulation, but from most other regulations.
You call, sir.
I, maybe I can help with that. It's my understanding, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, that with, the city is exempt from planning board and everything else. If it chooses, for the most part, the city would come before the planning board for a project that would be subject to planning board approval just out of caution and courtesy. And I think that that's what this language was put in there, because it doesn't change the state law. The city is exempt from its own planning regulations. It would be exempt from any provisions herein with respect to this. And that language was put in at, just to preserve what has traditionally gone on with other boards where the city is an applicant, and that is just out of courtesy and caution to go before the board and explain what the city is doing. I think that barely states it.
All right. Sorry we interrupted you.
No, I appreciate the dialogue and the discussion. And I realize it's probably not the right place for that, and it's probably a little on the late side. But notwithstanding any of that, understand, please, that my perspective is, and I can remember this conversation, I think, I can't remember if I was a trustee at this point. Yes, I was, when we, the library did the parking lot. We increased the parking lot of the library from eight to forty-three spaces, I think. And it was an interesting conversation, because we spent the forty thousand or so dollars out of endowment that was not spent, that was not, was not part of our municipally-budgeted funds. And I don't honestly know whether that's acting as the city or acting as a private endowment. I don't know how that works and whether there's a distinction or not. But we thought we understood what all the process was. We went to this planning board, we got approval to expand our parking lot. As I understand, the exemptions on this, this would then have to go to the Historic Overlay District because it is visible and it does significantly change, and so on and so forth. Anyway, so we got, we got to the end of the project, and we were, I guess the planning director reached out to us and said, "By the way, you need to spend the six hundred dollars on the Mylar overlay for the as-built plans." And the conversation, our then-chairman said, "Well, we should ask for that to be waived." And I can remember as a young trustee saying, "Actually, I disagree with that because, you know, as, I don't know, I kind of, I kind of can't help but subscribe to the idea of the Magna Carta, that, you know, we're subject to our own laws to some degree or another, and if it's a hardship for we, the people, of the people, by the people, then it should be." So I suggested that we actually pay that six hundred dollar Mylar overlay, and we did. And so that, I guess it makes me want to ask the question, is are we, you know, where is the balance here? And I don't know that we have, I, from where I'm sitting, in trying to be a law-abiding guy that follows the rules, I don't know that I'm clear on what the library's responsibility would be. To me, it would be much better if it said in black and white, something to the effect of, "All city property shall be subject to the Historic Overlay District, excepting those properties, such as the library campuses, plural, that are stewarded by another board, commission, or trustees." And of course, I'm not only thinking of the library in that statement, I'm also thinking about the inevitability that the Historic Overlay District will grow, probably to its initial proposed boundaries from fifteen years ago of Lake Winesquam to Lake, to the Winesquam River, and that it might well include the Colonial Theater. One of, I was asked this question today, and I guess I, I think maybe it's obvious, but I guess maybe it's not. Why is the library opposed to being included in the Historic Overlay District? And I have a couple of answers to that question. I don't know if they'll make any sense, but the first one on my list is because the city already owns the library. You may recall, we got into trouble years ago with the Attorney General's Division of Trusts for buying the piece of property next to the Goss Reading Room. And then when we went to sell it, is when we found out that it's illegal for library trust to own real property. And so we worked that out. But you, city council, representing the citizens of Laconia, are the owners of the property. We, the library trustees, cannot demolish that building. So if that is your concern, rest assured that you already have the decision, the sole authority on that particular aspect. The trustees are stewards of the wishes of the trustor, or in this case, trustors, who wanted to see that building built. And I can envision a time where it becomes a question of, well, which do we have to honor? Number one, trustees cannot delegate their authority. We must do it. We are required by law to, through that fiduciary responsibility, to represent the trustor's wishes, our benefactor, Mr. Gale. What if we have a conflict there? It would be, it seems to me, easier for us to have direct control. It will tell you, it is a lot of work. The trustees are in that building, are thinking about that building every single day of the year, whether it's open for business or not. And we really pay attention to that. We take it very seriously.
Would you take a question at this point?
I'd be delighted to.
Councilor Lippman.
So, John, I understand your concern. Again, I repeat the, somewhat repeat the question I said to Maria, that if it's a clear exemption, why would you be against the rest of the community that's showing a strong outpouring of support to want to have a Historic District?
I might have promised Tara that I wouldn't answer that question. May I answer the question?
Go. You stand and hear your answer.
Thank you. Counselor, I don't know that I can, I can totally disengage myself in the fact that in what I do for a living personally, I'm going to answer this question personally, take my library hat off, and say that revitalizing old properties that are rundown and dilapidated has been something that I've spent my life's work doing. I joined the library building committee before I joined the library board of trustees. And from my personal, not representing the library, but from my personal perspective, it's never popular. If I said, if I said to somebody, "I'm going to build a red building with a pink roof," and the other way around, a pink building with a red roof.
Excuse me. Can you finish with the hat on in terms of being library trustee?
I appreciate it.
And then if you want to come up and speak as an individual, just so we don't conflate this.
Perfectly understandable.
If the library is exempted from it more concretely, is there an objection as library trustees?
I understand the question. No. No. And I'll leave it right there, then?
If you want to speak as an individual, I'd like to hear that, too, but I just want to be clear in what the library's position is.
I think you've probably already, in the interest of time, you probably know where I stand, and I'll leave it at that.
I'm not sure as an individual, so.
So, any other, I'd be happy to entertain any other questions about the library. Thank you for your consideration. Oh, one last thought. I am a library trustee, so disregarding the cult aspect of what might have come before I was born, it's a really interesting read, and I will just share with you that the protagonist cites that when he was doing the Cortland development, "Do you think I could get that passed, Toohey?" And he's not the only one. I'll never, ever get approval from any group board, councilor, committee. So, anyway, a little humor for you. Thank you.
Hi, Sarah Jenna. I'll be much quicker. I did have on the Historic Committee that we formed from the planning board, and I just wanted to say, we did start with those parcels in particular, not to only single those ones out, but to have the committee, once it's formed, actually determine from there what other ones should be added. So we just kind of had to start somewhere. And also, that it's not solely to save St. Joseph's Church, but it's also to prevent... Church, but it's also to prevent another historical building from applying from a demolition permit tomorrow. We just don't want to see any more of our character here in Laconia taken from us. So, I'm for this, and I hope it passes. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Jane Whitehead, 245 Pleasant Street. Well, first of all, St. Joseph's Church doesn't enter into this at all, because there is a demolition application on file. And even if we pass this, they can, the diocese can still demolish that church if it chooses. But there is, as I see it, a bottom line here, and it's a very scary bottom, and I'm not going to go further with that image. But if, as things stand, we, if we do not put in place a historical overlay district, there's nothing to stop whoever acquires the puzzle house from tearing it down. There's nothing to stop now someone from tearing down the beautiful Port Cochea of the train station and putting up golden arches instead. There is something that very drastically could happen to the fabric of this town if something like this, which is a very gentle overlay, it does not preserve it. Certain things can, cannot be preserved from demolition, except by this, this overlay.
Thank you.
I feel like I've never got over the trauma, being traumatized from 1969 and 1970, losing the O'Shares Building, and losing several other buildings. I don't care about paint, flagpoles, porches, or any of that stuff. I just want the integrity of the building itself to still be there. What they did to the railroad station with the press card thing was fine, in my mind. That, you know, that's doable. The integrity of the building is still there. It could still be used as a railroad station, or restaurants, or whatever. So, I hope you do pass this. I, I understand Marie's comments about trouble staffing boards and stuff like that, but I, I think there's enough interest in this, that I don't think that'll be an issue. And if, and if they make some silly demands, you guys here at the council can undo those silly demands. So, that's all. Thank you.
Wait a minute. Let's see if there's anybody else who wants to speak before Ms. Shore gets up. Can we, yes, in the back, we have someone who wants to speak for the first time.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Bruce Knorr. I've had the pleasure for the last two-plus years to serve as an alternate library trustee. And it's in that capacity that I offer these comments, and in that capacity only. My focus was, what did this mean for Laconia Library? And thanks to the next speaker and prior speaker, and your discussions, my particular concern, I think, has been addressed. The library is in great hands, has been, I like to think that it will be. It's also protected by the people who sit around the table here tonight, and your successors. So, I think you have a difficult decision, I know, but you've answered my question as a library, an alternate library trustee, and I thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak for the first time? Mrs. Shore, you can speak again now, if you like. Please be brief.
Absolutely. Two things. I'm really thrilled that a couple of people from the trustees came out, so thank you very much. I really had hoped to maybe hear from people sooner, but better late than never. She had spoken regarding alternatives, and I just wanted to make something very clear. When we started this process, and yes, the church was the catalyst to the process, but in that learning situation, it was very obvious to us very quickly how quickly something that significant in our city could disappear. And that's where historic district came into being. We met with the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance, and the question was posed, what are the options? There are two: create a historic overlay district, or get an easement. And I can tell you from really good experience that an easement is way worse than an overlay district. And it, and it requires money, and that was not something this small group had. So the process we took was a historic overlay district. Those were the two alternatives. And I, I'm thankful that Marie is thinking about alternatives, but that was the only two, and this was the one that would work for this group. And that's what I wanted to share. Thank you.
While you're up...
Yes, sir.
May I ask you a question, please?
Of course.
I'm glad you came back up.
Thanks.
Something occurred to me during the entirety of the discussion about the library. That may not be obvious, but I'd like you to, to everyone, but I'd like you to address it. And that is, and then one other issue. As far as the library is concerned, if it doesn't matter legally whether the library's in the district or not, that the city doesn't have to abide by the regulations of the district, why is the library included in it in the first place?
Because I'm assuming spot zoning comes into play with something like that?
I'm sorry?
I'm assuming some sort of, call me if I'm wrong, but you can't just, I don't think you can just have two properties on this side and two property, I mean, then the, then, then the church and the puzzle and the school would be a district. And it, because the, it has to be a...
Okay, so the, so the sole reason to your understanding why the library is included, even though it's not covered, is to make the buildings that are covered contiguous?
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's my understanding. Someone else?
Because otherwise, there'd be no reason to take, not to take it out, since it's not covered at all.
That's correct. But let me ask you this question. Is there ever a time, ever, and I always go, and this is a horrible way to think of things, but I always say to people, someday we'll be dead, and the next group is going to have to take it over, so we might as well put something into place that maybe they can take on and move forward with. So, when we're all gone, or we decide, is there ever a time that the city would sell a building they own?
Well, they wouldn't be...
Does the city do stuff like that?
They could do it anyway. We're all admitting here tonight that the building is not covered by the law, so even if it's a hundred years from now, the city council could do whatever it wants.
Sell the building to whomever they like.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah.
So, with the building aside, and of course, a hundred years from now, there won't be a historic district, maybe. Who knows? But if the choice was by the city to sell that building to someone else, then it then becomes a non-municipal building, and it becomes safe under the historic district.
All right. So you want it preserved, so that should it ever fall into private hands, it would be regulated?
I would love that.
Okay. My second question is, in defining the, the buildings that are covered under the current description, there's been no discussion or even mention tonight about the Holy Trinity School. It's not on any registry. No one's made an argument that it's a historical building. Would it be a fair statement to say that the only reason that the Holy Trinity School is included in this overlay district is because at the time this language was drafted, the church parcel was one? And all three buildings on the church parcel, from the rectory to the school, were all the same property. So to cover one, you had to cover all?
I'm going to answer yes to that, but I have a rebuttal statement to that.
I'm sorry?
I have a rebuttal statement to that.
Okay. So you're, you're not agreeing that that's the case, the only reason...
I agree that that was the case when that was created, when, when the, when the district was, the historic overlay district proposal was made. That was one parcel, and yes, it, it, we had to...
It had to cover the school to cover the church.
Correct. But I would prompt to say that reuse and rehabilitation is better than rebuilding. Because I don't, I don't know why you're asking the question, but it's freaking me out. So, I'm just throwing that out.
Well, I'm asking, I'm asking whether or not, in hindsight, now that that building has been separated from the other two, which no one, I think, I shouldn't say no one, I think it would be difficult to argue that the, the Buzzell Mansion and the St. Joseph's Church are both historic by Laconia standards.
Very much.
I think it would be much diff, more difficult to argue that the Holy Trinity School building is historic by those same standards.
I would agree with you.
And therefore, the question is, should it be in the district, since it's on the tail end of the district, should the district be cut off to exclude the school building?
I want to tell you, no, for this reason. We already have people frustrated at the fact of the size of the thing, and how many owners are inside the district, and that's frustrating. I would say no, because you've already put forth a, an opposition to the size. And so it sounds like what you're looking to possibly amend is the size of it to go smaller. So, yes, I agree that it was originally put into the, the district because it was part of the original parcel of, that the diocese owned, and we were looking at those parcels to stay safe. But, yeah, I don't, I'm having a hard time answering it, because I'm kind of scared at what's, why you're asking that. Sorry. Apologize.
Well, I'm just, I'm just asking if it's necessary to keep the school building in. I think an argument could be made. Obviously, the diocese doesn't want to keep that building. They want to sell it.
Right.
And, and restrictions that you put on that building in terms of looks will greatly, one could argue, will greatly restrict what a potential new owner could do with that building.
I guess I, that I don't agree with. And I guess my question would be, why, why wouldn't you have it inside the historic district? Buildings that are insignificant on the criteria don't have to follow, you know, they can, if, if for some reason someone comes forward and says...
To allow the next owner to have much more flexibility.
That's right.
That's why.
Right. And I can see that. I understand where you're coming from, but I believe that...
And it's not a historic building.
Nope. But I, right. And so being inside the historic district, not being a significant building, does not hold it to everything listed.
Yes, it does.
But it can, they have to come, but the commission can, so you know what, you're good.
So, it does have to comply. If it's in the historic district, and some developer wants to renovate it, not just demolish it, but renovate it, they would be subject to the Historic Overlay Commission.
Like, to the review?
They just would be. So, and you say, that review would be very deferential because the, the building has no historical value.
Well, I don't think we can...
Well, that's predicting events in the future that I'm not willing to predict. Simple.
I had another thought in my brain, and I'm sorry, the lateness has escaped me.
That's all right. Jane behind you wants to say something if you're out of words.
Okay. Well, if I come, if I come up with it again, I'm coming back.
Oh, no.
I just wanted to say that the historic district is not just about the buildings. It's about the fabric. And, it's about the fabric. It's maintaining the character of an area. And yes, that school is part of the character of the area. It, buyer can renovate it and use it, but I think what we want to prevent is a Dollar General, or, you know, a car wash. I don't know, something that is out of character with the fabric of the historic center of Laconia. And I don't know whether it's historically or architecturally significant. I don't know its age. I haven't done any looking into that building. But it connects, it connects the fabric. So that includes the lawns and the trees as well.
But under this ordinance, if Counseler Bounds, I started saying me, but I wouldn't do that. Maybe you would do it. If Counseler Bounds bought the old police station across the street and turned it into a Dollar General, there's nothing in this ordinance that would prevent that.
Exactly. So that's why it'd be nice to put the, put that on there, too. But, you know, to try to present the character, to, to keep it intact, and preserve, preserve the document of its history as well. So it's not just the individual buildings. It is the character of the whole, including the lawns and the trees. But you can cut down the lawns, but, any more questions on that?
Anyone else? All right. I'm going to declare the public hearing closed at 9:24.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Haynes, your eyes are better than mine.
9:24.
9:24 PM. And note again, for the record, that we will take this up again tonight under unfinished business. Time's now, time now for the mayor's report. Obviously, I'm going to keep this extremely brief tonight. I just wanted to acknowledge and notice my Christmas decoration here tonight. And for the sixth and final time, I get to, to show you all the key to Christmas Village that I received last week at the grand opening ceremony. I now have six of these keys that are, that make for wonderful Christmas decorations around my home. I treasure them. This one was given to me by this year's mayor, who was Paula McVeigh Tarantino, otherwise known as the Grinch of Christmas Village.
Grinch.
So, again, as I said at our last meeting, I thank Counselor Hamel in particular, and all of the other elves. It was wonderful to see Ernie Boldick there again this year. And, and I know that it's an incredible amount of work, that very few people are involved in way past their elbows, and perhaps up to their nostrils by now. So, it's, we all very much appreciate what you've done. And I'm very appreciative of getting this key again this year. And, and next year, it'll be Counselor Hosmer's turn to start his own collection. Committee reports. Any committee business tonight? How about liaison reports? Any liaison reports tonight? None? I'm sorry?
Mr. Mayor, it's not a liaison issue, but Counselor Haynes and I attended the Lake Shore redevelopment planning commission meeting last week. And I, I'd just like to report some of the things that we heard. Other councils may or may not be aware, the legislature is looking at creating a Lakes Region authority to run that for the next six years, after which, I guess, it, it goes out of business. But that commission will have the, or authority, will have the authority to sell property and to lease property, but only lease for six years. If they lease for seven or more years, it requires governor and council approval. They also announced that the maintenance cost for the existing facility is around $300,000 a year. And there was lengthy discussion about whether that money should be transferred to the authority or not, but in any case, $300,000. And finally, important to me, was that, that it appears they're going to spend somewhere between $15,000 and $25,000 in hazardous material removal over the next several months. But the thrust of all of that is to say, they really are starting to move towards accomplishing something. It's not just rhetoric anymore. They're, they're starting to look at, at potential buyers of the property. They're setting up the mechanism to sell the property and put it back on the tax rolls, which they mentioned repeatedly in their, in their discussion. So, again, it's not a liaison report, but I wanted to just mention it.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We are, how long it's been, we are back to Citizens of Comments. Now is the appropriate time on our agenda. I hesitate to say this out loud, for citizens to address the council on any matter that is on tonight's agenda. Anyone who just can't stand it, and has got to get up again. No? All right. Thank you. City manager report. Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the only topic that hasn't been spoken to is the manager's report, so I guess I will address that tonight. It's included in your packet. A couple of quirks in the report, and a couple of areas that I'll identify for you. Mostly, it was a timing issue, where Thanksgiving fell late this year. City Hall was closed Thursday, Friday, and then into Saturday, Sunday, we rolled into December. Some staff vacation. Some of the, some of the transactions for folks, especially in motor vehicles, couldn't occur. And we had a very busy day here on the first Monday in December for all the folks who were coming in and doing what should have been November transactions. So, that's a long way of saying, I think this will all kind of work itself out by the time you get the report next month. So we do not have included with the construction value, again, that was a timing. We also had a staff person on vacation. I did see it today. So we're right in the same ballpark of the 14 million where we were a year ago at this time. We'll update that for the next report. You see the fire and rescue calls there, nothing out of the ordinary there. I want to point out the public assistance data with Glenn Smith and his staff. Smith and his staff. Some good efforts going on there and, and really working. You can see that some of those numbers are down, especially from last year, but more in line where we were in 2017, 2018. Turning to the next page, you will see a large uptick on the police department activity on motor vehicle stops and written warnings. My understanding is this is one of those grants that the city applies for on an annual basis. And whether it's distracted driving or commuter, we have dedicated folks out there who are doing enforcement of the roadway. So that's why you see that number jump up a little bit. Going down two blocks to the property tax collection, again, you'll see over in the lower right-hand corner, that number is 57%, which is significantly a higher collection percentage than any of the previous five or six years listed there. And again, that has to do with the timing of the bills being out earlier this year. So therefore, folks were coming in a little bit earlier and paying them. But again, that'll all work out by the time we hit the deadline for tax bills, which is next Monday, a week from today. Motor vehicle registration, I alluded to this a little bit. Again, lower right corner, the percent of budget has dropped a little bit from where we were. But again, I attribute that to the Thursday, Friday falling into be the end of the month and the weekend. And I think by the time we get through the December numbers, which will play catch up with those late November registrations, that'll be working itself out. As requested by, I believe, Counselor Cheney, we have taken a first step and it's still maybe a little bit of work in progress on breaking out the police overtime, by holiday overtime, incident, court, or shift coverage. And again, I thank Glenn for working with folks over at the PD and starting to give a little added detail to that. So we will continue to monitor how we can make that informative for you. No real changes that I want to highlight on page four of the report, also known as page 23. Turning to page 24, boat taxes. I already spoke about this at a meeting or two ago, how we're a little bit of a bump, but that's all good because revenue's coming in higher than expected. Another one of those anomalies in the EMS billing. If you look at the November numbers and you look at the billables last year compared to, for November compared to this November, go in the fourth number from the left in the November column and you'll see it's only at 201. Again, that tied into that long holiday weekend rolling and getting some of those into the system. We expect by the time those get loaded and billed, that number will show a significant increase by the time we get the, the next report. So again, a lot of this was timing of how the calendar fell for this month. Looking at last year's billables as a standalone silo for that fiscal year, I will draw your attention to the payments column at the bottom. The 959,000, that's $12,000 higher than it was last month. So we still are seeing folks who are on payment plans or collection agency, I'm sorry, the collection agency money isn't there, but folks who are on payment plans or just maybe some straggling bills for whatever reason, you know, we're still seeing that number grow on an annual, on a monthly basis. The last page, we are into our winter maintenance season. So we had one event in November that we had some mixed ice rain, snow conditions. And you can see the breakdown of overtime, outside contractor costs, how many tons of salt and sand and what that value was to it. And then a running total on the, on the entire winter maintenance budget at the bottom. One other item that I had on your desk for you this evening is more or less just an FYI, an update. This was on the police station carpet replacement. So the council did approve at a prior meeting, an amount not to exceed 23,995 for carpet replacement. It was asked that the facilities director along with the police chief go through, take a look at carpet versus the squares. Did all the carpet need to be replaced? The, the final determination was we're going with carpet and no square pads. There was concern about, yes, it's easier, you can replace a square, but then is it a more vibrant color than the other faded ones around it and stuff? The reason that they continue to go with replacing all of the carpet is where the seams connect and the fraying, and actually the warranty of the new carpet if you're budding it up against older frayed carpet. So collectively, with going with all carpet and not the squares, there was a reduction in the overall project of about $3,500. So the not to exceed of 23,995 should end up being around 20,500. And with that, I'll be happy to take any questions anyone may have.
Questions or comments for the city manager, Counselor Hamel?
Just once, one question, Scott. On page 23, the TIF balances, the Weir's is 26,000 to the positive. Is, is that a change from, I mean, when we pay the bond out of there from the, part of the TIF goes towards the bond, four point something million. It's always been negative. So we've gone past that point now, contributing more than what the payment is allowed.
I'm going to defer to Glenn for the update on that. I don't think it was a four million bond in the Weir's TIF. That was about a one point.
Well, I mean, the whole project, but I mean, the TIF contributed to part of that bond.
And I think when you see this, next month, they'll be back in the negative.
Okay.
What happens if you have the full year of revenues are already in that district, but only one quarter of the expenses have hit so far this year? So that we have another bond payment coming up this month.
Okay.
And you'll see that continue.
I just didn't know if it was starting to tilt.
Not quite. I'm sorry. Not, not quite yet. Based on the pro forma, and again, I'm just jumping in because we went through this before Glenn's time here. It's only been a couple of years. And we had talked about it being about a five to six-year period where it would break even for that debt service standalone. And then it would have to start to pay back the due to, due from, which we thought would be maybe maxing out at around 150,000. So we've looked at those numbers and we still feel that we're on track, big picture, for that six or seven years out from here.
Okay, great. Thanks, Scott.
Sorry to jump in on you there.
Thank you, Glenn.
And are there questions or comments for the city manager? No? All right. Thank you. And we'll move on. We have no new business tonight, so we're immediately to unfinished business. And we have two items of unfinished business before us tonight. The second, first item is the second reading and approval of ordinance 2019-235 to amend city zone code zoning 235 by adding a new section M called short-term lodging and adding a new definition for the same at 235-13, per, 235-13. So counselors, what you have before you tonight, as you know, this passed, what's in your packet tonight, starting on page one, I'm sorry, starting on page 27, page 28 and 29. This is the ordinance as was, language was approved at our last meeting and forwarded to public hearing tonight. Okay? So this is what's subject immediately to approval of second reading, if that's the desire of the, by second reading, if that's what's desirable by the council. Also tonight, on page 30, is some language that's not included in what we currently have before us that's been passed on first reading. So if the council had any desire to take this up tonight, we would first have to get the ordinance on the table and then someone would have to move this as an amendment. Okay? And then once the motion, once the, the, the language has been amended, then we could get back again to voting on the, on the entire zoning ordinance. So, I'm sorry?
I think if you, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if you amend the ordinance now to the suggested amendments that have been provided, that it may be necessary to have another public hearing. I don't, I'm not certain of that.
We're not required to have even one public hearing because the planning board had one. We may, but we're not required to legally.
I think if you amended it, that's different. If you take what, you didn't take the planning board's proposal, you amended that.
All right. Let me, let me ask the city manager for advice on this.
I'm not trying to create a, a brass here.
You're, you sure are. I think that's one of those gray areas. And I understand what Counselor Bounds is asking. I think generally speaking, if there are substantive changes to something that's gone to public hearing and it's amended, you know, 180 degrees, then it would probably would make sense to put the new language back out to a public hearing. If you're doing some technical and around the edges type of changing and going from 14 days to 21 days, or one year the license is good for, to two years the license is good for, I would consider those in the ballpark and that would not trigger it. So I think if we get to...
So what's on page 30 tonight, to answer Counselor Bounds' question? Do you think this is around the edges or is this a substantial change?
I, I think I would probably put this in the, around the edges. I think there's probably very limited properties this would apply to.
Applicable to.
And I also think you did broach it that we were going to be asking staff to work up this type of language to bring forward as well. So I think, well, maybe it hasn't been fully vetted. I don't think this is, I would consider a substantive change. If you added some more wrinkles to this going forward that had never been discussed here before, that may change my thoughts on whether the entire package would warrant again. And again, you can always err on the side of caution and move it there if it's the council's purview.
Okay. So to clue everybody in on what we're talking about here as far as this potential amendment is concerned, this was discussed by the council at our last meeting. And this specifically came to our attention because of the, the point that's been made at several city council meetings now by Mr. Morissette, when he has addressed the issue of a quote camp. So this amendment that is before the council tonight is an attempt to address that, that issue, although the word camp is not used. But for the purpose of the audience, I will, for purposes of informing the audience, I will read this.
Mr. Mayor, I could maybe, do we want to go to the motions first and get this on the table before we start talking about amendments?
Well, I just want everybody to know at this point what's, what's in front of the council. So if I may be permitted, I'm going to, I'm going to read this and then we can get back to deciding what the will of the council is. Okay. This proposes in section one of what's in front of the council tonight, add a subsection D. And subsection D would say permitted in the residential, single-family, residential general, and residential rural zones in a seasonal dwelling unit for a maximum of 15 separate rentals or a maximum of 120 nights, whichever occurs first. In a seasonal dwelling unit, short-term rentals are allowed in the above-mentioned districts only from May 1 to October 31 of each year. Short-term rentals are prohibited at any other time. A seasonal dwelling unit for this purpose is defined as A, dwelling unit that is occupied only between May 1 and October 31 of each year, and does not apply by inference to any dwelling that is occupied other times of the year by anyone for any purpose. Okay? Two, the dwelling unit has less than 1,400 square feet of living space. And three, there is only one dwelling unit on the associated lot. Okay. So that's basically what this, if we adopted this language, that would affect, say, that in those three zones, if you have a seasonal dwelling unit that you want to rent out during the summer only, and that building is not inhabited by humans anyway, any other time of the year, and that's a stipulation, then it would be exempt from the ordinance with the following restrictions, that you could do it a maximum of 120 nights a year, which basically covers the summer. So you would, you would have the whole summer to do it. All right. So having said that, so we're now, where everybody's on the same page, you know what we're talking about. So what's actually before us at this moment is the, the, what do I do with it now? Is the ordinance that starts on page 27. So a motion be in order? I'm sorry, Counselor...
Just a point of order in terms of getting a motion on the table and getting discussion. Are we prohibited from having any further amendment than what is described here, for example?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
And in fact, well, let me stipulate, let me, let me clarify that. I would think that, so I have some language that I may or may not hand out later that I have drafted myself. It is not past muster with the planning department. I have discussed it with the city manager and, and he, if I could put words in your mouth, agreed that he did not see any significant legal issues with it in terms of, it deals with a couple of other issues that came up at our last meeting. All right. But this, this language is not ready for prime time at this point in time. It has not been put into legalese. It has not been fit into the ordinance at the appropriate places. It's simply, in effect, expressing a sentiment at this point in time. So I think that it would not be appropriate for that to be offered as an amendment tonight.
Could you share the, share, I'm, I'm appreci-
That's not to say if you wanted to make an amendment tonight, right now, the thing says 14 days. If you wanted to make an amendment to 28, I think we would all consider that a germane amendment that would not affect the overall passage.
I'm, I'm interested in hearing where we start because it could affect my overall perspective on this in terms of the issues that you are interested in potentially addressing. They may not be addressed tonight for the reasons you cited, but in terms just conceptually, what issues were...
Is there any objection to sharing those with the council? I'll hand this out and then I will explain. I'll make sure I got enough to include myself here. There's three going on. One to the clerk as well. And did I have it get as far as you?
Yeah, we could share one here. That's fine.
Sure. Okay. All right. This, this possible proposed language deals with two issues that were discussed at length at our last meeting. One, it, it attempts to address the issue of people who have been doing this, albeit illegally, for a long period of time, and whether they should somehow be, in effect, grandfathered or at least have that opportunity to be grandfathered. So that's number one. And the second issue that it addresses is, is the, the, I'm hesitant to suggest that this is specifically aimed at the Winnebokki Playhouse, but certainly they would be, it attempts to address that, that there may be some individual applications of short-term rental that have a significant community benefit that rises well above the individual enrichment of the property owner, that there's a deeper community benefit and that there, there might be a need to have a procedure in place where those people could, in effect, get a waiver. So what this, the, the basis of this is to say that, starting at the top there, notwithstanding the restrictions placed on lodging short-term by this ordinance, the zoning board of adjustment may grant special exceptions to these restrictions based on applications that are judged to meet all five of the criteria listed below. And it lists the five things that by state law, the zoning board of adjustment must take into account when it's considering granting a special exception. All right. So that doesn't change. So those are just listed there, including traffic impact and, and keeping with the overall master plan and that sort of thing. All right. The new stuff is six and seven. So the, after point five, the way this is drafted at present, again, this is not past legal muster, it says, in addition to meeting those five criteria, the zoning board of adjustment will have to judge that the applicant meets one of the two special criteria that follows, not both, but one. So you've got to meet the five statutory ones plus one of the two possibilities that the city offers. Okay? And so case number one is the applicant, applicant can demonstrate that the use in question has been in common practice at this specific structure for a period of not less than 10 years prior to the enactment of this ordinance. So that's what addresses, we've been doing this a long time. We'd like to continue doing it. That's the purpose of that statute, that language. The second one is to say, and again, it's one or the other, it's not both, the applicant can offer convincing evidence that granting a special exception for this structure includes a general community benefit that rises considerably above the financial well-being of the applicant. That simple enough as to what's being offered there? In other words, is there an overall community benefit here by allowing this activity that, that, that rises above the, the financial well-being of the applicant, him or herself? All right. So does that answer your questions?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
All right. So again, if we get into that tonight, we would have, I would say, and I'm editorializing here and the council is more than appropriate to take exception to what I'm about to say. But my feeling tonight is that, that we had this discussion in our last meeting. Options available to us are to pass on second reading amendment, the, the language as we brought into tonight as is, period. Second option would be to, to add the ordinance, add the amendment, I'm sorry, that's on the last page of the amendment, to amend it to what the language is on page- to amend it to what the language is on page thirty, dealing with seasonal rentals. And I would rule that that would be germane and I would go with what the city manager said in that he does not believe that's a substantive, substantial change. And so therefore, my ruling on that would be that that is, that if that amendment passes, that it would become part of the amendment tonight and we could have a final vote on the entire language tonight. Okay? So assuming that someone makes the motion to put that amendment on the, on the floor, we'll have a debate, we'll vote on it, it'll either pass or it won't pass. If it does pass, or if it doesn't, then the floor would be open to any other amendments. If those amendments, again, are minor in nature, obviously minor in nature, then I would think we could pass those amendments again without endangering our ability to pass this ordinance if that's our desire tonight. Okay? However, if the council by consent wants to go in this direction as two, two more amendment or another amendment and whatnot, then I think we could pass that amendment. Well, we can't pass that amendment tonight because it's not proposed in legal language. But we would probably, if it's the overall consensus of the council to do that tonight, that this is something we'd like to see included, put in legal language and included, then I think we would table the overall ordinance again tonight pending the new language coming from the planning board. Or not from the planning board, from the planning department. And at your first meeting in January, January ninth, we would expect that to come back to the council from the planning department with the final language. And that the council would, that then the ordinance would be up for a final vote if it's the will of the council on January ninth. I think we should not schedule this for Jan, December twenty-sixth, third, because it's, there's, we know at least two counselors are going to be absent and possibly more than that, and we may not even have a quorum. So that's what I'm recommending. If, if we keep it to this one amendment, we can pass it tonight. Now, that's not to say, as Counselor Hamill pointed out at previous meetings, that, that if we pass this tonight without that future amendment, that this is the end of the story. That other amendments at future dates and whatnot could be made as proposed by, won't be proposed by me anymore, but it could be proposed by someone else at a, at a later date. So that, as best as I can explain it, is sort of where we are tonight. Counselor Lippman.
So I appreciate the, the work that's been done to bring this forward. And I just asked, this is a question, my fellow counselors on this. I think the mayor's put something good on the table. And, you know, could we do an informal poll with respect to our interest in maybe doing this as a two-part? In other words, moving forward with some vote on what's in front of us with a vote on the concept of this, which would then come back separately as a, as a separate amendment to something that's already in place?
So I guess I would defer at this point, there were four of you who voted for the ordinance at our last meeting. So I think the, I think the will of the council is with the four of you at this point in time in terms of what you want to consider and how you want to consider it. Counselor Hamill?
Thank you. I guess I'm kind of going along with Henry is I would propose that we look at this and probably look to pass it. And as far as the other amendments that were passed out tonight, that could come back after legal, wrote the, the proper language and whatever, and it could be amended into the new law. I mean, there's nothing that's changed other than what we've passed.
I just want to ask a question and then I'll come to you.
I was on, I was on the, I was on the losing side, so I'll defer to the four.
At this point, we're, we're deferring. All right, but I'd like to ask a question of Counselor Lippman to make sure I know what he's getting at here. So are you proposing that no amendments be considered tonight?
I'm proposing that the amendment that was noticed and that you just read be discussed and on the table. If there were any small tweaks to it, it would be of the nature that would be, you know, this number of days of this month or whatever, get, get piece of the business done. And, but also to inform the public and those that have an interest in this that we have an interest in addressing those types of issues that we heard tonight that might require.
So you're advocating a final vote on what we have before us tonight and then to take the amendments up separately?
Yes, but I'd like to, to have us just procedurally take a non-binding vote on the concepts that you put on the table here, because I think that's.
Like an idea, how much chance it has of passing?
Yes. That would affect my overall vote.
Counselor Hasmer.
I appreciate the efforts you've put in on this, Mayor Angler, to address the situation that Neil has, has discussed. And I think it's opened up my eyes to the situation he's in and the impact that we could have, the detrimental impact we could have on the Winnie Playhouse. I don't want the perfect to be the enemy of the good, and I think we've got something good here. That being said, as much as I'd like to get this moving forward faster as opposed to slowing it down some more, I am of the opinion that I would like the language you submitted to be refined and to be integrated and bring this all forward as one piece of, of one proposal as opposed to going piecemeal. So though I was on the, the four, I was one of the four votes to, I believe, to, to pass this last time, I'd be reluctant to be that fourth vote again until we work on this a little bit more.
All right, for the record, I wouldn't be reluctant to be the fourth vote. I think we all understand that. All right, so Counselor Haynes.
I appreciate this language and it really addresses a couple of things that I had some real concern. I agree with Counselor Hasmer. I'd like to see the whole thing put together and then put to bed.
All right, how about you, Counselor Cheney?
I guess, I, I think these folks deserve some idea of where we're going and we ought to vote this, what we have before us here tonight and come back as quickly as possible to take care of the amendments that you've proposed. It's, it's going to be public knowledge of what you've recommended. If we take a straw vote and it appears it'll pass, that should give them confidence. At the same time, those people who, who have long-term plans or whatever that may be affected deserve notice as early as we can give it to them. I think we ought to do that tonight.
Okay, so then the next question is, I guess, if I could get a, an informal show of hands here, are any of the four of you who voted for the ordinance as we have before it tonight opposed in general or in principle or whatever to seriously considering and look favorably upon the intent of the ordinances that have been suggested tonight that are not currently part of the ordinance? And that would be the short-term or the summer rental kind of thing? The, the ten years or more of doing it or the, the community benefit provision, those three things? Are there any of you who would not vote for the ordinance if it were, if those items were included? I see three shaking hands, I'm assuming you're, so those are not non-starters, is what I'm asking for you. What Counselor Lippman is asking for, he wants, if, he, he was asking for a good faith reading of the council as to whether or not the council, the four of you who voted for this last time would be up to seriously considering these three changes.
So if I can understand, I, I like the amendments that have been proposed because they address some of the concerns. I'm just not ready to move forward on it tonight in piecemeal and then working on, say, the language you submitted. I would like to do it all at once.
And I suggested that was one of the alternatives. And to do that, we would need to push the whole thing back to September ninth, or September nine, January nine.
That's what I would prefer. But as a matter of principle, I think this is going in the right direction. So to give people some confidence who are in the Airbnb business or the short-term rental business, I mean, that's as far as I'll go, saying I like what we're doing and where we're moving here. Just want it to be fine-tuned a little bit more.
All right, so I'm hearing that there are two of you of the four who would be predisposed to pass this tonight. And I'm hearing that two of you of that four are predisposed to waiting until the second and third items can be put into legal language and considered as an official amendment.
That would be fair to say.
Fair to say?
I guess, I'd, I'd like to acknowledge the good work that, that has been done to try to address the issue. I'd like to also acknowledge that this may be the last meeting that the mayor is presiding over. And I think from a, from my standpoint, a good faith aspect of dealing with the exemption issues that he's laid out here, I would be comfortable voting on the language that we have in front of us, in addition to the red page, if you will, tonight, with the understanding that we're going to take up as a subsequent amendment.
On January ninth?
January ninth, to get language in place for that. I just, I just feel like, you know, there's a balancing of interests here in terms of trying to be sensitive and, so.
Make a motion to extend the meeting, please, as we approach ten o'clock.
Thank you. It's like ten thirty. Motion been made by Counselor Hasmer to extend the meeting till ten thirty. Seconded by Counselor Hamill, all those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in for that motion, carry.
Just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, if I can, so on page thirty of your agenda, dealing with the seasonal rental, that has been vetted by legal and that is in its final form, ready to go? So if, if that was the concern, that that amendment has not been vetted, just clarifying that is.
So right now, again, trying to interpret what I'm hearing, I'm hearing that we have three counselors who would like to vote tonight to approve the ordinance with the amendment of the so-called red language. Okay? And so the one counselor, and three who would be, or two who would be opposed to that. So the, the, Counselor Bounds, we haven't heard from you.
Do I get to speak now?
Only after ten o'clock.
Look, the amendments that are being proposed, to me, are a little arbitrary. Dwelling unit, less than fourteen hundred square feet of living space, only one dwelling unit on the associated lot. I don't know what the, what the rationale for that is. Not that I'm necessarily opposed to that language, but I generally am opposed to passing this draconian ordinance as it is right now, even with the amendments. You just shortchanged too many people who are legitimately, honestly, and can demonstrate a history of satisfactory rental platforms for a number of years. You're just hamstringing them. So, and the idea to come back and amend it later, you know, pass the ordinance as bad as it is and come back and make it better later is, I, I think impractical. I, I would ask, there's got to be some consideration for a waiver, ala, you call it exemption, I'm always calling it a waiver, but for a long-term, for a local resident who can provide a plat, a copy of the platform rules, can demonstrate a history of satisfactory rentals of at least three years, five years, whatever the number is, and other possible conditions with respect to maintaining what they've been doing illegally for years. So, and, and nobody knew it. I mean, when this problem first came up, it was, I don't know whether it was legal or planning or something. It was, well, you can't do anything about it. Well, it turns out we could, we could stop it. But the initial opinion was, you can't stop it. They get to do with their property what they want, but we can't.
I never heard that.
Well, that was my understanding.
You did?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's, that's how it came up.
Well, I think when Dean first approached us the very first time about that, he was not aware that the current zoning ordinance forbade that activity.
Well, I'm.
I just want to be clear, it was, we went to legal and that was the legal opinion we were representing. So I just say it wasn't Dean's opinion. And then legal upon sitting down and talking through a number of things, came back and said.
Oh, yeah, it is illegal. We can enforce it. All right, so I'm hearing three votes yes, three votes no, in terms of taking action tonight. Is that what everybody else is hearing? And, you know, so it's up to you guys what you want to do. If there's three yes votes, I will be the fourth. So know that before you make any frivolous motions. All right, so any motion would be on the table to, I mean, what's in front of us tonight would be to move away of a reading of this ordinance in its entirety into reading tonight by title only. Someone want to make that motion? Counselor Hamill makes that motion, Counselor Cheney seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand.
Does that include taking up the amendment or is that just getting that on the table?
That's just saying we don't have to read the whole ordinance. All right, so we have, in favor? Six votes in the affirmative. Oh, you're opposed, I'm sorry. Five votes yes, one vote no. Counselor Bounds is the no vote. Okay, so then the next motion would be in order would be to approve a second reading of ordinance two thirty-five, amending chapter two thirty-five zoning to create a new definition of short-term lodging and accompanying regulations. So this is as it came into the meeting tonight now. Not including at this point the red language. All right, so does someone care to make that motion? To, you're moving to read on, approve on second reading the ordinance as presented tonight.
And then, but how do we put the amendment in?
After it gets on the table, the floor will be open to amendments. All right, Counselor Cheney makes that motion, seconded by Counselor Hamill. All right, so that is now on the table or on the, I'm sorry, is open on the table and is, is open to amendment.
No, you've got to have a vote first.
On what?
On the second reading.
No.
You don't?
No. It's subject to amendment. So any amendment is germane at this point in time, or any germane amendment is germane. Counselor Lippman?
So I'd like to amend it, to add the red language, and I'd also like to just have a little discussion on, on that amendment itself.
Okay, so Counselor Lippman moves to add, in addition to the language approved at our last meeting, our first reading, the language that's included on page thirty tonight. Right, that deals with the so-called seasonal rentals. All right, so I need a second for that amendment request. Counselor Hamill seconds that motion, all right, now it's up, open for, the amendment is open for discussion.
Sure, so again, keeping with the spirit of just very narrow things. Counselor Bounds raised the issue of fourteen hundred square feet and I just would like to get some perspective from Dean, if that's possible, in terms of why that number was chosen.
Dean, can you address that, please? Question is, why was fourteen hundred square feet?
And how is that, how was that measured?
I went through all of the properties that are along the waterfront that could potentially hold camps. So that was Shore Road, there's no camps on Shore Road. Eastman Shore Drive, Leighton, Pogus Park, and a few others. And there are about a dozen structures that are what I would consider to be a camp or camp-like. I've never been in them, you know, and they were all less than fourteen hundred square feet.
And in terms of measuring them, are they, when you say fourteen hundred square feet, is measured like we would measure for tax purposes?
I, I was using the tax card. So things like porches, decks, garages, if they had them, most of them don't, but that's not living space. So this is, this is, you know, living room, kitchen, bedrooms, bath. Not, not an enclosed porch, not, not a deck, not a, you know, what, you know, whatever, it'd be living space.
And then the other question I have is in terms of the, I think when we're talking seasonal here, we're talking, you're talking about a non-winter seasonal kind of situation.
Counselor, if I could, I had quite a discussion with legal about how we define. Counselor, if I could, I had quite a discussion with legal about how we define camp slash seasonal. And you're right, the intention here was to primarily cover structures that are not winterized. However, the problem becomes, how do you define that? What standard do you use? What level of insulation or non-insulation triggers, all of a sudden, it's seasonal versus year-round use? And people go up to their camps in the middle of winter sometimes and they, you know, they put the space heaters on and they, you know, they bundle up, you know. So this is why we came up with the dates, as opposed to trying to define what constitutes a structure that's a seasonal structure.
Okay.
And the third provision on one dwelling unit on the associated lot was an attempt to eliminate the situations where we have, like cottage colonies type situation, or someone has a main house and a camp on the same property. You know, I don't think that's what we're trying to, I don't think that's the situation that we're necessarily, and I didn't find, I should say I didn't find it. I did find a couple of those, but there aren't very many of those.
If I could just, so, just sort of putting this aside for the moment, do we have a consensus around the table that we want to address also separately the issues of exemption that...
Yeah, I think there's a, from what I can tell, there's a consensus to do that. The only question is whether or not to have a final vote on what we have before us tonight or to lay that until January.
So other than David, is anybody else?
Well, David is not part of that consensus.
Right, no, I'm just saying, other than David's opinion on where we should do this, I'm saying in terms of my other fellow councilors, that this language was ready tonight, which it's not. Do we have, in concept, are we?
Good with that. If this was, Mayor, may I? If this passed legal, I'd vote for the thing tonight. And I'm not saying it's illegal. I just would like to see, have attorney look at it.
Okay.
Well, and it's got to be fit into the ordinance in the appropriate place.
We've got two of them sitting here.
I'm sorry.
We have two attorneys sitting here. Seems to be we ought to.
Would you like my biased opinion on this?
Well, I'm hoping his balance is yours.
All right. So what's on the, what's on the table right now is the amendment on page, which is the language on page 30. Any further discussion of the amendment?
Well, I raise the same issues. You're dealing with arbitrary stuff, 1,400 square feet.
Lawyers deal with all the time.
Huh?
That's what lawyers deal with all the time.
Thank you, Bob. I know you do it all the time. I'm following your lead. Okay. It's arbitrary. It's premature, premature. And you don't need to do it tonight. I don't know why you're bound and determined to do it tonight. You should do it when you've got the whole ordinance in front of you, you understand what you're doing, you've got, people know what they're looking at. So there's my opinion. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion about the amendment? All right, we're going to vote on the amendment now. This is not a vote on the main motion. This is simply to vote to adopt, to incorporate the language that's on page 30 into the primary language. Okay? Do we understand that? All right. All those in favor of amendment, including the language on page 30 in the ordinance, please raise a hand. All those opposed, please raise a hand. We have four votes yes, two votes no. The motion carries. All right. So now we are back to the language on, from page 27 to page 29, that now includes the language on page 30. The main motion has been amended. Okay? Council Lippman. We're back to discussion on that, on the main amendment, on the main motion.
This is a question, just to benefit the public, there was a question in terms of owner-occupied. Can we just clarify for the public what the owner-occupied provisions are in this?
Owner-occupied buildings are exempt from the prohibitions included in the ordinance, and the definition of owner-occupied is a building in which the owner lives there not less than 150 days a year.
So just to be clear, if you, just because I know we had some misunderstandings during the testimony. So if you own a home and you live there 150 days or more a year, and you want to do one of these platforms, you're exempted, meaning you don't have to get, you don't have to register?
No, you do have to.
You do, still have to register. Okay, clarifying that. But there's not a limitation on thereafter.
You don't have to do 14 days or less. You don't have to do so many days a year or whatever. It's, you're exempt from that regulation. But regardless of where you are in the city, if you intend to be in this business, you need to register with the city. That's part of the ordinance. And pay the fee once every two years.
I mean, from my perspective, this isn't exactly what I want, but I think from, in the spirit of reasonable attempt to accommodate some of the concerns that we heard, that and the amendment, I can support this. Any other discussion? Ready to vote on the main motion?
I have a discussion.
I'm sorry. Council Bounds.
Okay. I've said this before, and I'll say it again. At this point in time, what you're considering is overreacting. I want you to listen to what Mr. Bassett Rubin told us about overreacting. This is not Miami. This is not New Orleans. This is not Boston. This is not San Francisco. This is Laconia, New Hampshire, with a 15,000 year-round population and a lot more population that comes in out of the tourist industry. I understand what your concerns are about affordable housing, but this is just knee-jerk reaction, number one. Number two, I do not share the city manager's opinion. And I understand that you'll have the, you'll have the gavel in terms of that ruling, but I do not share the opinion that this is minor. This, you're carving out a whole cast or list of properties that are now not going to be subject to this ordinance. You're just creating a whole new subset. And that's, that's substantive. So you run two dangers. Number one, reacting in a knee-jerk fashion. And number two, putting this ordinance in jeopardy because it's simply a substantive amendment. I'm done.
Thank you. Council Lippman? So, just in terms of the process here, David, I think that getting registration of what's out there is a positive thing in terms of knowing where we're at. I think in terms of having owner-occupied exception, I think deals with a lot of the property rights that people have accumulated indirectly by being able to do that without a lack of enforcement and existing laws. And so I guess that, in terms of what Rubin was testifying on, I think that it still allows people to come into the community and take advantage of those types of platforms, so long as there's a, an ownership interest in those situations that don't sort of fit that model. I think we have addressed a couple of them with the amendment and, you know, a position to deal with others subsequently. I understand it'd be preferable to do it all in one, but I guess, again, I'd like to, the concept of working in this community is trying to work together and compromise, and I think that there's evidence of that here. And so like, that's why I'd like to support.
Can I, can I ask one question in response to that?
No.
You're lucky he's not the mayor.
Yeah. What kind of sureness, or what kind of reliance do you have that we're going to have some kind of a consensus on some kind of additional language that we're going to suddenly adopt into the, into the ordinance?
Well, I guess from having worked with a group of people around this table, their word is good. And that, I think.
It's going to be different people around this table.
Majority, majority are good. And I think that, that all of us, and the vote against it, in the case of next, our next mayor, Hosmer, I think he's in agreement that we need to deal with, have some exemption or waiver process here to deal with some things that don't fit in this. And I heard every other counselor say, for your concern, supporting it. So I guess I have enough confidence that, and again, out of respect to the outgoing mayor, trying to get something completed on his, on his term, I think we can work together out of that respect. I think we've respected each other and there's been give and take on many issues over the years to get things done. And I guess that's, that's what I think the strength of this council has been, is being able to have some give and take, whatever the project would be.
Don't get me wrong. I love working with Mayor Engler. I think he's done a superb job. I love him to death.
I think there's a butt coming here.
Wheel him out in the hall.
Okay. So the, anybody else? I was going to say something.
I just, Henry, Council Lippman, are you just suggesting that this is for January 9th?
Yes. Yeah, that's what he's suggesting.
I trust my fellow councils here that they see this as an issue and that would want to get it, the language vetted with council before we pass something.
Okay.
You know, the bottom line on all this, to me, if I could just, I know that I've been a big proponent of this, and I agree with Council Lippman. I think that, you know, we've been making a lot of sausage here over the last few months, and nobody's going to get exactly what they want. And a lot of this is compromised on what's possible and what's not possible to get the number of votes needed to pass. The bottom, bottom line to me, as best I can simply articulate it, is, and I don't think any of the amendments have either been adopted to date or have been proposed, including tonight, endanger my bottom, bottom line in any way, shape, or form. And that's why it's been relatively easy for me to compromise on some of these other items. And that bottom, bottom line to me is, as simply as I can put it, I don't think that I, as a resident of Dartmouth Street in Laconia, have any business buying a house on Holman Street that I have no intention of living in, and turning it into a short-term rental business, in effect a motel. And that's as simple as I can put it. I just think that we have, as a community, have a right to protect ourselves from that kind of behavior. And I don't think I should have that right, nor do I think you should have it. That, you know, I'm picking on Holman Street here or using it as an example, but, you know, clearly a residential street where people have lived for generations in many cases and whatnot, and it's, you can't, you can't make an argument with me that it's a good thing to have somebody buy a house on Holman Street and turn it into a motel and do so legally because you happen to be a resident of Laconia or wherever. I just think that's bad public policy. So I will shut up. All right. So I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of 235 to amend city zoning 235, adding a new section M, short-term rental lodging, and adding a new definition for the same 235, section three, as amended tonight by including the language on page 30. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Any opposed, please raise a hand. We have three votes yes, three votes no. The mayor votes yes, and the motion carries four to three.
That's a biased vote.
I'm sorry, what was that?
It's just noise.
I said that's a biased vote. Completely changed the whole amendment without.
Sir, please control yourself. You had the opportunity for the mic.
I'm sitting here listening to you, and you've taken something that was presented to the public tonight, and you said that you had something to change, and now you've changed it without the public's knowledge.
I'm asking you to please respect the decorum of the meeting. All right. Now, while we're still on this subject, I think that a motion would be in order to ask the planning department to put the general language suggested in the handout from the mayor tonight with regard to previous practices and community, general community benefit, to put that in legalese and legal writing that can be considered by the council as an amendment to the just-passed ordinance on January 9th.
Before we do that, I don't want to be limited by this language here.
You're not.
Well, I'm going to be clear about what I'm, what I'm looking for. I'm looking for an amendment, for a waiver, for a local resident who can demonstrate a history of satisfactory rentals in the city of Laconia for how many years, that.
That's what that says on number six.
You've got 10 years, but.
Well, if you object to 10, you can make it 1. You can suggest it be 20, whatever.
Okay.
But the sentiment's the same.
I don't think it's the same, however you want to do it. I'm looking for, I'm looking for a waiver for those folks who have been conducting business in this way on a regular basis and do it responsibly. Okay?
All right. So I ask for a motion to refer this to the planning department for language to come back. Someone make that motion?
I'll make that motion and also.
Council Lippman, let me get a second. Council Cheney seconds the motion.
So I think in terms of the sentiments that David expressed, that we can have a couple of options that planning can bring back to us, that, that address this issue for us to consider.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise a hand.
Mr. Mayor, just for one housekeeping there, the January meeting is January 13th. I think you said January 9th.
Oh, I'm confusing it with inauguration night. I'm sorry. Yes, we have four extra days. January 13th is the first meeting. All those in favor, please raise a hand. We have six votes in favor of that motion carries. All right. We are on to the second item of new business. And before we get to that, I'm going to ask for a motion to continue this meeting as late as 11 o'clock. Someone reluctantly make that motion?
Nope.
Council, Council Bounds is inde-fatigable. He could be here all night. Is there a second? Council Hammel seconds it. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Did I see every hand up? Did you vote yes?
Yes, I did.
All right. Six votes in favor of that motion carries. All right, thank you. All right. Next up is second reading and approval of ordinance 2019-235-21, period one. And we are on to the issue of the historic overlay district. And the ordinance is being proposed, starts on page 32, and runs all the way back to page 45. First motion to be in order would be to move to waive the reading of this ordinance tonight in its entirety and to read tonight by title only. Council Lippman makes that motion. Council Rehane seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. That vote is unanimous. Motion carries. Next motion up, and again, we can accept amendments on this tonight, but we have to get the main motion on the floor first. Okay? So next up would be a motion to move a second reading. Now, I just realized, we didn't have the third reading on that previous item of business. Do we need to do that?
Yes.
All right. With the council's, council's, that's my fault, and I apologize. With the council's indulgence, I'm going to back up a minute here. This was the one we had the four-three vote on. So we moved on second reading, and being advised by the city manager, we also need to move on final reading. So a motion be in order to approve ordinance 219-235, amending chapter 235 zoning to create a new definition of short-term lodging and accompanying regulations as amended tonight by including the language on page 30. Someone make that motion, please. Council Lippman makes the motion. Council Cheney seconds it. All right. So this is final vote on that language as of tonight. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Three votes yes. All those opposed, please raise a hand. Three votes no. The mayor votes yes. The motion carries on final reading four to three. All right. I'm sorry for that oversight. Now, we're back to historic overlay district. So motion be in order to move a second reading of ordinance 235-21, period one, amending the chapter 235 zoning to create a new section 21-1, establishing a historic overlay district and accompanying commission. one, establishing a historic overlay district and accompanying commission. Councilor Haynes makes that motion, seconded by Councilman Lipman. All right, so we're on to discussion now, and discussion may include any proposed amendments to the ordinance. What's your wish, council, Councilman Lipman?
I'd like to clear the air on the library situation, um, and however is best to, to do that, uh...
That's fine.
So, I mean, I think leaving the contiguous nature of it makes sense, uh, to leave the library in the district, but, you know, just being clear that, with that section that was read during the second-to-last paragraph, whether we need that.
Yeah, we ought to take that out.
Cut it down. It says, uh, applicability to the city of Laconia.
Right. It's on page forty-six.
Yes.
Can we just delete that paragraph in its entirety?
Yeah.
Or say, I, I, I guess, I'm, I'm interested in keeping the district whole, um...
Yeah.
But not to, not to make it subject to...
Oh, are you making a motion?
I'm making a motion to do that, and...
To what?
To keep the library in the district, but to be clear in that paragraph, that the applicability to the library...
So are you moving to take that paragraph out?
I'm, I guess I'm looking for some technical advice, is it better manager to just, um, leave applicability to the city of Laconia, any property owned by the city of Laconia within the HOD shall not be subject to the provisions of this article, period.
That's one way to do it, or you strike it, and you default back to state law that says the municipality does not have to follow its own regulations with regard to linus.
I'm more comfortable just striking it.
Fine.
Because...
All right, Councilor Bounds makes a motion to strike the paragraph on page forty-five, which starts with the words applicability to the city of Laconia, to strike it in its entirety. Is there a second of that motion? Seconded by Councilor Hosmer. Any discussion? This is an amendment now.
Yeah, so the discussion would be, is if subsequently, in the unlikely event of a water landing, that the library were to be a private entity, it would be subject to it because it's in the zone?
Yes.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Alls in favor, please raise a hand. Amendment has been approved, six-zero. Okay, any further discussion or further amendments? Councilor Cheney?
I have questions. In, well, later on in here, I have some concerns because at one point we'd say at required maintenance and demolition by neglect, it says property owner in the HOD is prohibited from allowing their property to deteriorate in the manner specified in section B. I went through and there's eight section Bs, so I'm a little confused which section B we're talking about.
Can you put, what page are you on, please?
I don't have a clue.
Forty-four.
Page forty-three, at the bottom of page forty-three?
There you go.
So, getting back to, uh, designation of historic district B, one of the eight Bs, not every property or structure need meet these criteria, and, and I'm not sure exactly what that means. Does it, if, if I, if I, if they, and within the, I'm not talking about this historic district, but this commission's being formed and it can propose other areas of the city. So in the middle of it is a brand-new, two-year-old, single-family home. Is it gonna be, because it's not a property or structure that meets these criteria, is, are they still gonna be required to listen to the historic commission about how they paint their house, or how they pave their driveway, or, I'm just at a loss for...
Where are you on language? What page?
I'm on, I'm, I don't have page numbers. I have designation of historic districts, item B, capital B.
Those, those districts, as I understood it, would have, still have to come back to council for approval.
Hmm. Absolutely, I'm just wondering, assuming that it gets passed, this sort of implies that even if your building is not historic, but you're in the district, you've got to comply with the district.
That's right.
Okay, I got a problem with that. I, I don't know how to fix it, but I have a problem with that. I, I don't have any problem with identifying historic buildings and saying they have to be maintained properly and whatever, but some poor bugger that owns a brand-new home that has no historic value at all is told that, you know, he, he can't paint his house to color, change his shingles...
Well...
And put a, a, a metal roof on his place because the historic commission doesn't like metal roofs.
Well, I, I guess that, at this point in time, that's really not a concern, because we've identified a specific district. If you want to go back and identify more districts that would have some kind of germane problem like that, you can address that, but that, this has no effect on the district that we're actually designating.
I agree with that. I just am concerned that it, the language will apply in the future to, to others. Onward, um, except for those buildings within the HOD that have been, you need to know, you're at, activity exempt from review, B.
B again.
Except, number one, work performed on the interior of buildings, except those buildings within the HOD that have been previously designated by the historic commission as significant for their interior archi, architectural or artistic value are exempt. I'm a little concerned at how the historic commission is going to previously designate the inside of my house as architecturally...
I get it, I get it.
Moving on to B four, uh...
This is on page thirty-seven?
Yes, I presume it is.
Thank you.
We're still in exemptions. No such part of, of, any of the following items, if they are situated on a building or on a lot, such that no part of them will be visible from the public street. And I'm okay with most of that until we get down to septic tanks, leach fields, well, any other utilities, or other yard, whatever that word is. I mean, if you've got a septic tank in your front yard and it fails, I gotta go to the historic commission and say, can I fix my septic tank? I'm, go ahead, um...
So I guess in terms of, um, the, the, what's in front of us, I think it's intended for a specific district, which I doubt that septic...
Is a problem.
Is a problem. I, I guess I, I'm interested in us taking some, take a step forward here and then, you know, getting some experience in that district to, to inform while we go next.
Henry, I appreciate what you're saying, and I agree that I want to see something come out of this tonight, but I just want to express some concerns about, because this, we're not writing an ordinance for this historic district. We're writing an ordinance creating a historic commission that can propose additional areas and whatever, and I just, I'm a little worried that we should have paid more, I should have paid more attention. Colors of paint and stain applied to a residence or commercial structure in the HDC determines, that the HDC determine does not contribute significantly to the character of the district. I, I'm not sure what that sentence means. It starts out by saying, no review or certificate is required for colors of paint or stain applied to a resident or commercial structure that they determine does not contribute significantly
Everybody know what page he's on?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
All right.
Number seven. Sorry about this, mayor.
So you have a copy with no page numbers on it?
I do.
He's working hard.
It's her fault.
Okay.
(laughter) Gotta blame somebody, Cheryl.
All right, where's the language that made no sense, the sentence?
Number seven.
Number seven.
In four, you talked about, and you talked about number four.
Yes, number four.
This is what's, this is what's exempt.
Number, yeah, these are all exempt.
Yeah.
But?
Colors of paint and stain applied to a residence or commercial structure. Oh, I, I see. So it's exempt, but it's basically saying that the HDC gets to determine if that paint or stain contributes significantly to the character of the district, in which case it is covered.
Yeah.
That seems to be what that says to me.
That's my concern.
It's an exception, but it's maybe not really an exception.
Well, number four is the same way. I mean, it's...
Number one and number four were the other two that I was concerned about.
So, I mean, I think we have two ways to control these things. One, we get to appoint, right, to the commission, and secondly, we get to decide whether we want to expand it and, um...
I just think, Henry, we should, the, the language should be clear and understandable, and, and number seven, maybe it's just me, but it's not clear to me. And I, I think we ought to spend some time making sure this stuff is clear. And I'm prepared, I'm prepared to pass this tonight, but I want my concerns on the record that, that I hope we can come back and deal with at some point, because...
Well, I'd like to maybe ask a question of the manager in relationship to what you're bringing up. Where are we with council review of this document in front of us?
It has been vetted.
And...
We asked Dean to speak to it a little bit more, but yes, it's been vetted.
Yeah, could you speak to that, please?
Yeah, this has been through legal multiple times. To Councilor Cheney's couple of comments, we need to back up just a little bit in that once the commission is established, one of their responsibilities is to do a survey of the structures that are within the historic district and, and try to come to the, some of these conclusions about certain buildings before anybody ever makes an application. So for instance, the comment about an interior of a building, um, the, let's, let's just use St. Joseph's Church as, as an example. That's gonna be within the, within the district. It's not just the outside of the building that people are concerned about, it's also probably the inside of the building as well. And so the, the historic, the, the historic commission would make a determination, as they do their monthly meetings, that this building, the interior of this building is significant, so therefore it would be covered by the, by the ordinance. Another building, perhaps the Holy Trinity School Building, would not be considered to be significant on the interior. Perhaps the outside in terms of fabric of the district and et cetera would be something to consider, but the interior probably, probably not.
My son would argue, because he carved his initials.
I, I, you're right.
I think he thinks it's a...
But I, I think it's, I, I think a lot of these things occur as the commission does their business before there's even an application to, to, to come...
Dana, I, I agree, and I go back to what I said before. I'm concerned, not about this specific area, but what do we do when it's some other area of town that includes buildings that are not...
Right, so if you, if for some reason, let's say the Bank of New Hampshire building gets included into a district because the other buildings around it are considered to be, should be part of an historic district. I, I don't think anybody's gonna argue that the Bank of New Hampshire building is historical in any way, shape, or form, or significant architecturally, maybe significantly architecturally on a different level, but certainly not from an historical standpoint. So therefore, it may, it would be in the district, and, and it is subject to a, hopefully, very quick review by the commission that says, yeah, you're good to go on this building because it's, you know, however, you gotta look at it from the context of the surrounding buildings, you know? Again, we go back to the, you know, the concept of the fabric of the, of the district. If you wanted to, if the owners of that building wanted to paint it pink, maybe that's not what we want to do, but they want to change the windows out to something entirely different, I don't think that that's an issue, you know, tho, those kinds of things.
I'm not done.
The floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. I gotta figure out what section I'm in. Oh. I'm in, I think, standards for review.
Somebody know what page he's on now?
Oh, we're gonna find it.
Page forty-one.
Forty-one. Skipping on forty-two to forty-three. C, under another P.
The C.
Demolition of removal. Way down at the bottom, it says, financial hardship of the owner of the property shall not constitute a hardship for this purpose. I had, having it at one or two times in my life had financial hardships, that's, I'm concerned about that. I, I don't know what it... Getting all of this, Cheryl? No?
Yes.
Just ignore me. I don't blame you.
That's difficult.
There was something, I think about, uh, there was something, somewhere else in here where I talked about financial hardship was not, um, I think under the deterioration of the property, it said something like that, but, but number four at the bottom of that page is, is where I bumped in a section B reference, and I didn't know what B it was talking about, so, just so we know.
What page are you on, Chris?
I think I'm on forty-two, going on to forty-two. Is the last page forty-three?
No, forty-five.
Forty-five. The last one I'll drag out this meeting on is, on page forty-five at the very top, it...
No, that's, that's not...
It talks about required maintenance and demolition by neglect. And item fifteen, I'm sorry, it's B, conditions fifteen on page forty-five says, other conditions as determined by the code enforcement officer or the commission. I thought that was too vague and too broad. I mean, I'd like the, the things that the code enforcement or the commission can, can determine to be outlined before I agree to it.
Same with that.
All right, we are continuing discussion of the amendment being offered tonight as amended once to, to this hour. It's ten forty-seven PM, just in case anybody was wondering. Any further discussion, amendments? We ready to vote on the ordinance? I don't hear any more amendments.
Do we want to make an amendment to carve out the school?
I'm sorry?
Do we want to make an amendment to carve out the school? Because if we did, what we, I think the city manager indicated that if we removed, and correct me if I'm wrong, map four twenty-five, block forty-four, lot one, from the designation of the historic district, and that appears on...
Is that correct?
On the top of page thirty-six is where Councilor Bounds is right now.
Yep.
Yeah.
So if we, if we, Councilor Bounds is asking if we move to strike map three twenty-five, block forty-four, lot one?
Just for clarification, four twenty-five.
I'm sorry?
Four twenty-five.
Map, map four twenty-five, block forty-four, lot one, move to strike that.
That would, that would take the school building out of the district. That would, that would take the school building out of the district.
Yes, and then we'd have to designate the two separate lots, oh, containing the church and the left-hand side of the, of the parking lot, which would be map four thirty-two, block forty-four, lot one point one, and map four thirty-two, block forty-four, lot one.
So, so just to clarify, this is important. So on the top of page thirty-six, number three, that map item four twenty-five, block forty-four, lot one, is what I would refer to as the church parcel as it existed prior to the subdivision.
So this language hasn't been changed?
No, because that's what was in the working on it. So we've only, we've only just recently created the new tax map lots for it.
All right, so the language, if we wanted to strike the school building, Counselor Bounds's question is, how would this language have to be changed?
The motion would be to remove from the ordinance, map four twenty-five, block forty-four, lot one, which removes the entire church campus, and then you would add back in map four thirty-two, block forty-four, lot one point one, which is now the rectory, and you would add in map four thirty-two, block forty-four, lot one, which is the church.
All right, so we're gonna eliminate, I shouldn't say we're going to, what Counselor Bounds is asking is, first we eliminate lot one, and then we add it back in again.
It's a different, it's a different map number, so map four twenty-five is not one of two.
Amendment number three to read.
All right, four, four thirty-two as opposed to four twenty-five.
Five, correct.
Okay.
So if you're striking.
So are you making that motion, Counselor?
I am. So let me be, um, let me be clear. On page thirty-five, it starts out with, um, uh, the identif- identification of the historic overlay district. It, that, that's, um, and then it identifies as part of that section B, the delineation of the district. So, and on page thirty-six, I would move to strike the designation of my, of map four twenty-five, block forty-four, lot one, in its entirety. Then I would substitute two, two supplemental designations, map four thirty-two, block forty-four, lot one point one, and ma- map four thirty-two, block forty-four, lot one.
Everybody got that? Know what the, what, what's being proposed here? So basically, what's being proposed here is to not consider the current church property as one lot, but to consider it as three lots, which it currently is now, and to exempt the school lot, which also includes part of the parking lot.
Right.
As no longer being in the historic overlay district. So the overlay district would end at the church. Everybody got that? All right, so that's what's being proposed by Counselor Bounds. Is there a second? Counselor Hosmer seconds that motion. Discussion on the amendment. Ready to vote? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries unanimously. The ordinance has been amended for a second time now. Further amendments, further discussion. All right, are we ready to vote then, to, on a second reading of ordinance two thirty-five dash twenty-one point one, amending chapter two thirty-five zoning to create a new section twenty-one point one establishing a historical overlay district and accompanying commission as amended by the council tonight? This is approval of second reading. Could I have that motion, please? Counselor Hosmer makes a motion. Counselor Bounce seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the amended amendment on second reading, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries unanimously. And then, so we need one more vote, finally, to move to approve ordinance two thirty-five dash twenty-one dash one, amending chapter two thirty-five zoning to create a new section twenty-one two establishing a historical overlay district and accompanying commission as amended tonight. All those in favor, please raise a hand.
I need a motion.
Motion in a second.
I'm sorry.
I need a motion and a second, and then.
Oh, I didn't do that?
No.
So moved.
Second. Glad somebody's still awake. All right, so nobody even made the motion. All right, Counselor Bounce makes a motion. Counselor Hosmer seconds the motions, motion. Any discussion? All those in favor of final reading, as amended, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries unanimously. Okay. Council comments? Any council comments tonight? I think tonight would be a good night not to.
They're kicking me under the table.
I'm kicking him. I am kicking him.
All right, at this point in time, however, I would like to, under council comments, recognize the city manager because he has an item that he wants a quick decision on whether or not the council wants to take up or not.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The timing is of the essence. I had sent everybody an email in the last day or two referencing House Bill Four in regard to e-cigarettes, and this came initially to our attention by Kelly Gaspa, who's the Assistant Director for Partnership for Public Health. And time is of the essence. I spoke with Chief Canfield this morning, who had received a phone call from, I believe it's Chief Armaganyan from liquor enforcement, and indicated that the application that I've made you aware of has been submitted, and barring any action taken by the council tonight, they're in a position to approve that. So I would not recommend this as something that would be tabled. You either can take action on it tonight or choose not to, but I just want you to be aware.
I know that we extend the period in which to get back to the commission by, what, thirty days? How much time do we need?
I, I, I don't know if that's reasonable or not. I think the application's been in a while, and what Chief Canfield said to me is, they're looking for something more definitive rather than, I'm not saying they wouldn't, but I'm just sharing with you the, how I was told of a conversation this morning.
Because that's not the information I got.
I, it was originally, I thought we had some option, and again, Chief Armaganyan from liquor enforcement called Chief Canfield, and he called me this morning, and that's the message that was relayed. I'm not saying it's not, but I'm telling you that was not.
Did you wish to make a motion, Counselor? No, a question. Is that grandfathers' call?
So in House Bill Four, it was the trailer bill to the budget that got adopted late in the session, so what changed in there with the item we're on tonight is, number one, the, the new age for tobacco, including e-cigarette-related purchases, is going up to nineteen as of January one, so that's statewide. The second item that changed in there that was brought to our attention, and I've spoken with Kelly on this, is up until now, anybody who sold just e-cigarette-related products did not need a license unless they were also selling tobacco and/or alcohol. So Smokers Haven, my understanding, is sells tobacco and, and e-cigarettes. Happy Jack sells tobacco and alcohol and whatever, so they've already got a license. The one that was identified to me was the Raven Shop, I don't know, beyond the Raven, adjacent to the high school, that only sells the e-cigarette, and therefore, they need to submit a license request to the state for approval, and this is something new. It was not required before, but it's required now.
So what are you asking of us tonight?
The application is in, and my understanding of the language is, if there was a impact to the community because of location or health reasons or anything else that Kelly outlined in her email, that if that's voiced, the liquor enforcement division will take that into consideration in whether or not they issue a license.
And to my understanding, Laconia, to my understanding, Laconia has a higher rate of usage than the statewide average, according to Kelly.
I, I, I got up to speed on this in the last twenty-four or thirty-six hours when I got the email, so I'm, I believe I'm sharing accurate information, but I, I can't say that. Beyond there, I have no idea of what a financial impact might be to that business owner with regards to lease or rent or property or anything else. I, I have none of that information.
So if they don't get a license, they, they'd have to move or get out of business?
If they're not licensed, they would not be able to sell the e-cigarettes from that location. And I, and I understand that someone could say, well, they could move down the road and sell it somewhere that wasn't adjacent to the high school. I understand that. I don't know what business situation they may, may be in with that property, or a lease or an investment into, you know, build-out or anything else they may have done.
How, how, how long has the liquor commission been aware of the application, and why are we so late here that we can't get some more time to think about it?
To be honest with you, I don't know if we ever get notification that, from the liquor commission that says, hey, a new convenience store is opening, and they're looking to sell tobacco products. Do you have an objection? I don't think that's something that necessarily happens.
Well, if it's located next to a school, it might.
And, and I agree, and that's the reason this one in particular was brought to our attention. The reverse side could be argued, this person is in business and is selling a product that is legal to sell in this state. Where it really comes down to is the location, and that's where the impact to community. And this wasn't even on my radar. It was brought to me literally whenever I emailed to you Friday afternoon, Friday morning. So, and this came as a conversation out of the Partnership for Public Health.
As I understand it, if we request, the liquor commission and the liquor enforcement folks will review this license application and determine whether there is a significant risk to health and, there's a, there's a list of things. So I mean, I, I think our.
Mayor.
We'd like to make a motion to continue for ten more minutes.
It's gonna take more than that. I haven't broken the really good news.
Oh, oh, oh.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, half an hour.
Extend the motion, extend the meeting to eleven-thirty.
Oh, my God.
Motion made by Counselor Cheney, seconded by, no one wants to second that motion. Counselor Bounce, all those in favor, please raise a hand. Very slowly, six hands go up.
Why, why would we do it till eleven-thirty? What else have we got here?
Well, he said he hasn't told us yet. In any case, I don't, I don't think this is us saying they can't run their business there. It's our saying we want the liquor commission to look at it and determine whether it's a threat to health or whatever else is on there.
Does that sound like a? And was that specifically in regard to location to a school?
Right.
Okay. Then I think that would be, I think that would be an appropriate message that the council could direct me to convey.
I agree.
I agree.
Someone make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Do you have the wording? All right, we have a motion then, a seconded by Counselor Hosmer. Motion was made by Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Hosmer. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries unanimously. All right. The wonderful news I have to tell you now is we have need for a brief non-public session. And.
I think the clerk should have to stay for these.
I do not anticipate that the council will take any action at the end of this, any public action at the end of the, at the end of the non-public session, and the non-public session tonight is for elected officials only, no staff members. So I'm gonna excuse everyone from the room except the seven members of the council.
Do you want to make the motion and get a second and reference what you want in ninety-one A?
I'm sorry. I need a motion to go into non-public session under RSA ninety-one A. Paragraph A, the dismissal, promotion, compensation of any public employee or the investigation of any charges against him unless the employee affected has a right to a meeting, and requests the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted.
That's why you have to, I make that motion.
All right, that motion is made by Counselor Cheney, seconded by Counselor Hosmer. We need a roll call vote, so I will call for a yes or no vote to be taken by the clerk.
Counselor Cheney?
Yes.
Counselor Bounce?
Yes.
Counselor Lippman?
Yes.
Counselor Haynes?
Yes.
Counselor Hamel?
Yes.
Counselor Hosmer?
Yes.
Mayor Angler?
Yes. All right, we are in non-subject session. Thank you for attending.
Could someone send me or the clerk or both of us tomorrow the motion to come out? If there's a motion to seal.
I'm gonna keep the minutes.
The time of adjournment, thank you.
Oh, good, the minutes will be as another matter, but. We off line yet?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Good night. Good night.
Can I have a calendar that has a December in it?
Yeah, I think you're ahead of.
Oh, geez, I'm sorry.
This is your last meeting, you've set a record. Well, I'm comatose, I'll tell you.
I actually had a hope that we'd get out of here by nine-thirty or ten o'clock.
Me too, I needed a drink.
Needing a lot of drink, you have to bring potter potties up here pretty soon here.
I think we ought to rebuild this building a bit. Put in a toilet on the second floor.
Hard to believe they haven't, they never did that. We got some healthy bladders around this table, if nothing else.
I don't know how healthy it is right now.
So this.
I hate to mention this with Cheryl here, but I take a medicine called Flo-Max.
And then I'll email you when it's all set. Sometime next year.
What's your iffyness about the twenty-third?
I got Emma coming in from Arkansas, Patrick coming in from Portland, Maine, and my cousins are coming in from all over, so I'm trying to coordinate an evening with my brothers and my children and all of that.